Welcome to Millbrae Planning Commission Agenda Hearing today. Today is December 16, 2019. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my home, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a -- yes. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chairman Feng.
Here.
Vice Chair Quigg, present. Vice Chair Quigg, present. Chairman Joe.
Commissioner -- thank you. Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you all here. So, next one is Agenda Review. Does Director Meister want to speak something about?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, this evening, as you know, we have two public hearing items, and then we have an information item to talk about planning and building fees, as well as a discussion on the Commission's work plan for 2020. If it's okay with the Commission, I would recommend or suggest that if we could move the planning and building fee application discussion information item up first before the public hearing items. We do have a consultant here this evening, so it might be nice to have that conversation if that's the Commission's desire. If not, it can certainly stay where it is. But my thought was, since that's an information item, that we can get our finance director and the consultant to give that information upfront. That was one issue. And then, before we get much further, I did want to make an announcement this evening. Next to me, we have Roscoe Mara. Roscoe Mara has joined the City of Millbrae as the new planning manager. So, we're very excited to have him onboard. He started last Monday. Roscoe comes to us having served for the City of Arinda, for the City of San Jose, and then, most recently, the last four years with the City of San Mateo. So, we're very thrilled to have him onboard. He comes with a lot of experience in current development and mixed-use development and transit-oriented development. He's a graduate of University of California at Los Angeles, UCLA, and I think he's going to be a real nice fit with Linda and Sam and Nestor. And so, just wanted to announce Roscoe's hiring here this evening.
Welcome, Roscoe.
And I'll save Russ my comments for later on the agenda.
Director, do you have any estimate as to what the item number 8A would take?
Yeah, I mean, I think probably from a presentation perspective, it's probably about 10 minutes, if that. And then, depending on sort of questions that the Commission has, I don't anticipate the item being much longer than 20 minutes, but that's me. I guess it depends on how deep we get into some of the fee calculations.
Okay. How does that commission feel about moving this item up?
I think that item's going to take a long time. I'd rather let the House of Lords go first, my own personal preference.
I'm impartial. I don't know how long it's going to take either, so I feel kind of bad that they're waiting here, but we've got a nice group of other people for the public hearings, so perhaps those might go quicker than we think.
That's fine. You go.
I feel the same way.
Okay. Commissioner Wong?
Yes, I agree. I'd rather see the public presentations first.
Yeah, very well. You know, my personal opinion is that I think somebody applicants might be paying their consultants' time on an hourly basis, so it's, you know, it's only fair that, you know, we proceed based on what's on the agenda. So, if we can keep this currently as it stands, okay? All right. So, anybody else want to do an Agenda Review? Any commissioners? Okay. We don't have any meeting minutes. Public communication, this is reserved for people who wish to speak in front of this Commission, not on today's agendas, and everybody gets three minutes. I need a speaker slip. I don't have any in front of me. Do we have any speakers? Okay. We'll close the public communication. Consent calendar, we don't have anything. So, the first item on the public hearing today is 7A, 400 Chadbourne Avenue. It's a design review permit application to allow for the conversion of a single-family residence to a three-story duplex, and a setback exception is requested to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor setback to a residence located in a duplex R2 residential zoning. Mr. Feeding.
Good evening, Commissioners. This project is located at 400 Chadbourne Avenue. As you stated, the subject, to allow the conversion of a single-family residence to a three-story duplex, and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor setback to residents located in the duplex R2 zoning district. The project is located on the northwest corner of Chadbourne and Willow Avenue, between Willow Avenue and Poplar Ave, in the eastern area of the Highlands neighborhood, three blocks west of Broadway on Chadbourne Avenue. The site sits on the northwest corner of Chadbourne and Willow Avenue on a 27,600-square-foot lot, Zon duplex residential R2, identified in the general plan as low-density residential. The large lot is occupied by the new Methodist Church Millbrae Community Preschool, a church office building, and a single-family residence of 7,252 square feet at the southeast corner of the lot, Chadbourne Avenue and Willow Avenue. The existing two-story single-family house was built in 1918 before the church and other structures were built on this large L-shaped lot. The main goal of this project is to construct, renovate the existing home for housing for the pastor of the church, and then create the new upper-floor second unit for rental income for the church. This is a map of the location, and this is the unusual shape of the lot. The red box is the location of where the project site will be, and I want to explain a little bit the complexity of this lot and how the setbacks were determined, because that can be a bit confusing. So, according to our code, the front setback is determined by the shortest lot width, so that would be on this side, on the Willow Avenue side. Although, by appearances, this appears to be the side, and the home entrance and the doorway entrance is off of Chadbourne Avenue. But for calculations of the setback, the front setback would be located on Willow Avenue, and that requires a 20-foot setback. The side setback is five feet. Right now, they have an existing non-conforming three-foot, six-inch setback. And then, on the Chadbourne side, the setback would be 10 feet. So, we met several times with the applicant to work on the design and to get a better understanding of the setbacks, and I just wanted to sort of explain that upfront so that people have a better understanding of how the setbacks were calculated and the reason why the applicant is requesting a setback exception. So, this is the photo of the existing site. This is the location of the existing home. You'll notice it's split level, so there's a lower level off of the sides with a garage here, and then this is the entryway here to this level here, which is sort of a first level here, and then at the back here is a second level, second story back here. This is the proposed project rendering. You'll note here that the new addition is up on this level here, and the project includes interior renovation to the first floor here, and then interior renovation to the lower level to construct the additional garage and entryway for a two-car parking garage. So, this is a duplex, so each unit requires a two-car garage, and the applicant is providing the required two-car garage for -- it's basically, yeah, two-car garage for each unit. Existing residence is a two-story, single-family house with a two-car garage, the access driveway from Willow Avenue. The existing lower floor consists of a family room, crawl space, storage room, mechanical room, existing garage, and bathroom. The existing first floor consists of a covered porch, family room, office, living and dining room, kitchen and laundry room with stairs to the lower floor, four bedrooms with closets, and one bathroom. The existing roof is a combination slope, 412 and 12, with a rear flat roof that is box gable and flat roof type. The front and side yard landscaping are to remain, consisting of grass bordered by small shrubs and ground plants along Willow Avenue sidewalk, and a small cherry blossom tree in the front yard facing Chadbourne Avenue. This is the site plan, showing the existing and the proposed. This is the existing lower floor, indicating the garage area here. And this is the new lower floor renovation, showing the additional garage space, the two-car garage for one unit, and then a two-car garage for the second unit. This is the existing floor, first, the existing first floor. This is the proposed first floor. So, the proposed duplex would consist of a lower floor containing the front family room, crawl space, mechanical room, and stairs to the floor above, storage room, and the four-car garage with two access driveways from Willow Avenue. The proposed first floor would consist of an uncovered front deck, front living dining room open to a kitchen, side uncovered deck, three bedrooms with closets, two bathrooms and laundry room with stairs down to the lower floor. The proposed second floor addition would contain a front stairway to an uncovered deck and entry into the living dining room open to a kitchen, a pantry and family room with a side deck, laundry space, three bedrooms with closets, and two bathrooms. The project would maintain the existing front and side landscaping, as mentioned previously, the front lawn, the cherry tree, the shrubs and plants along the exterior of the building. The new driveway will consist of permeable pavement material, and the applicant will apply for an encroachment permit for the new driveway curb cuts. The applicants are requesting a setback exception on the east and north elevations due to the unique circumstances of the lot and history of the residential building. They also want to provide room for two full-size bedrooms and bathroom for the addition, and to better integrate into the design of the existing building with its unique architectural style and the building footprint of the existing building. So, this is the new second floor addition. As you can see, it basically is directly above the existing walls below. This is the existing south elevation. This is the proposed south elevation photo, or plans. They will be providing railing to match the existing, and then new windows with wood This is the existing north elevation, proposed north elevation. You can see the balconies on the side, and then the roof lines and the windows. Existing west elevation, the proposed west elevation. Existing east elevation with a single garage, and this is the proposed east elevation. Staff worked extensively with the applicants to improve the design of the east elevation facing Willow Ave, looking at breaking up the mass with architectural features where there was a variation in the windows. We also suggested having, working with applicants, suggested the bay windows, and then the roof pitch, the change in roof pitch on this side, basically to break up the mass and provide more architectural features on the side facing Willow. So, I just wanted to show a little bit of the work that we did, that staff did with the applicant. This was the original rendering when the applicant applied, and you'll note that the original rendering had a long wall face, a few windows, but there weren't too many architectural features on that side, and staff felt that there could be improvements to the design on this side. It seemed to have the, a large wall face. So, staff worked with the applicant. Again, here's the plans of the proposed original submittal. So, we worked with the applicant, we were able to come up with this design with the applicant, where you have the balconies, you have these covered in a roof pitch here, and then different sized windows, and then the bay windows at this side. And staff believes that this design greatly improves the design of the building along that exterior front, especially with the breaking up of the mass and the architectural features that were included. This is the rendering with the proposed design. Existing roof plan, proposed roof plan. This is the materials that would be used, wrought iron for the steps, for the, basically for the railing up to the upper floor, and then the gray colors, sort of light gray, beige colors. The reddish brick steps would remain. And another feature that was added to improve the design also was to add this different color shading for the lower level. So, this shading extends, wraps around to the side, to the Willow side, to differentiate the lower level where the garage level is with the upper levels, providing a color contrast in addition to different architectural features. So, just a note on the public noticing, staff followed Millbrae Code guidelines, or Millbrae Code requirements, as far as noticing within 300 feet of the project. It was also noticed in the newspaper, and there was neighbor consultations sent out, forms sent out to all adjacent property owners. Eight forms were sent out, seven were returned in support of the project. One property owner did not respond, so a certified mail receipt was sent to that property owner. At this time, staff is recommending that the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the design review permit application to allow the conversion of a single-family residence to a three-story duplex with setback exception, and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor setback to a residence located in the duplex R2 zone at 400 Chadbourne Avenue, subject to the attached conditions of approval. The staff felt that it met the findings for design review, and it also meets the findings required for the setback exception. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions, and we also have the architects here in the audience that can answer questions about the design and the plans, if there are more specific questions, if you may have them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Feeding. Does any commissioner want to ask questions to the staff?
Yeah, I do. The staff report chart says there were seven adjacent neighbors, and four returned them, and this says eight adjacent neighbors and seven came back. So, and this is that the 169 Poplar didn't respond, but this chart says they did. Please help.
Sure. So, these are the neighbor consultation forms that were submitted. They were, there were two designs, so the original design had neighbor consultations forms that were sent out. And then, of course, when the plans are revised, the applicant needs to go out and get new updated consultation forms. So, these are the consultation forms that were submitted. We have 177 Poplar Ave in support of the project. We have 169 Poplar Ave supports the project. We have 380 Chadbourne Avenue, Linda Flynn supports the proposal shown. We have 121 Willow Ave in support of the project. And then, these are the neighbor certified mail receipts that were returned, that were sent out. This project, 110 Willow, is under construction, and the applicant was not able to contact the owners. There's no one at the residence because it's under construction. 188 Poplar is, also owns the property at 184, right next door, so they own both properties. So, they were sent a certified mail receipt with the plans. And then, 173 Poplar Ave received a certified mail receipt. So, these are the adjacent consultation forms that were submitted to staff.
Okay. Just, your summary here is, doesn't match that at all, just so you know. This one says eight went out and seven came back, yes. So...
Okay. So, staff will, staff will correct.
Staff report is correct.
Right. So, staff will correct that, well, staff will correct the presentation. Any other questions from Commissioners?
Anybody else?
Yes, so, on the table that we have for zoning compliance, and this is the reason why we're here, right, because there's an exception request. The first table, fourth row, says lower floor rear west setback. It has existing of 195-foot setback. Is that not correct? On the west side, that, I believe that would be next to the school, right?
Yes, that would be, so, that's going to be, let me look at, so, the setback would be measured, this is considered the rear, so the lower floor, the rear west, from here to the property line over here is 195 feet. So, that, that's the, that's the total setback.
So, that's the setback from this existing?
Right, right. From the property line, from, from the house to the property line, which our code considers the rear property line along Poplar Avenue, that's 190 feet away.
But yet, there's all these other buildings, so really, there's a distance. I mean, this, this whole project is a bit confusing because there's several different lots, and yet, we're trying to treat them as one lot, but we're not really treating the building as on one lot, we're including all the buildings and the entire coverage for all the buildings.
Yes, that's correct.
So, it, it kind of brings into question about the parity. I mean, you know, you know, there's nothing wrong with having duplex and church on the property, but with this odd arrangement with all these different buildings, it confuses the issue about what is the true setback, for example, from that building to the west side of the property, because there's all these other additional buildings. And then, also, what is the true lot coverage if this was just taken as a duplex on just the parcel that it sat on, rather than the entire parcel? So, is it out of scale to the, to the property, the lot that it's on, or is it, I just, I just don't see it as really consistent, and I don't see these numbers that are presented here, like the lot coverage, 54%. 14,953 square feet, they're just, you know, this building itself that we're talking about in question is not 14.
Right. Yeah, the, that, staff, you know, looked at this, evaluated it, and the, like legally, we have to look at the entire parcel. We, this, this may be like a typical lot, but it's not, it's not, we go by the San Mateo County Assessor, and the county assessor considers this the entire L-shaped lot. And so, for the calculations of lot coverage in FAR, we use the entire lot as we're required to do, because this is the legal parcel. And based on that, and doing the calculations, and what are required by code, it does meet the floor area ratio, 76% versus required 88%.
However, the lot coverage on here says the existing lot coverage is 54%.
Yes.
So, if 50% is required, then it exceeds, already exceed?
Yeah, it's existing non-conforming. It's existing non-conforming. So, the, the situation with the setbacks, so the setbacks are existing non-conforming, this should be 20 feet, but it's 15. On the, on the side here, let's see, I should just put, this should be the full-size view. I'm sorry. You'll see this better. The, so, this is existing non-conforming. This normally would be a five-foot setback, but it's three feet, six inches. And then, this would normally be a 20-foot setback, but it's 15 feet. So, that's what the setback exception request is. And then, right now, like existing, the existing condition of this lot with this building as it is, it's existing non-conforming. It's existing over the lot coverage. That's, that's, you know, that's not changing. However, the FAR, they are adding that additional unit, but they do meet the FAR requirement, 88% when you look at the legal lot, L-shaped lot.
And lastly, can you elaborate a bit more on the north side, because I think that's where we're really squeezed with the three-foot, six-inch setback to the north end of the property. If this was a normal property with duplex, and what would be required for that second?
Yes. Yes, it would be, yeah, it would be required, it would require to be five feet. A duplex, all floors. So, all floors, five feet straight up and down, all floors, five feet set from the property line. Same with Willow, all floors, 20 feet setback from the property line, and 10, all floors, 10 feet setback from the property line. So, that's what would be required. So, in order to comply here, we're talking about one foot, four inches.
And then?
To step back. The good thing is that the applicants did reach out to the property owners, adjacent property owner, and this property owner did not have an issue with that, with that upper-floor addition, or, you know, staff has not received any concerns from that neighbor about, about the, that floor going up.
That neighbor being 121 Willow?
Yes.
What is the 121 Willow? What's that zone as?
This is next to the north side of it.
Right. Is that also a duplex, R2 or R1?
Let me take a look at the zoning on that. I believe it's R2, but the home itself is a single-family home.
R2.
Mr. Feeding, just, just get a quick...
Look at the zoning map. Let me actually have to, we can take a look at the...
Mr. Feeding?
Yes.
I just want to ask a quick question.
Sure.
I mean, I understand that there's, you know, this particular lot, how it's being configured, and how all these buildings are being built on this big lot poses a unique challenges when it comes to some of these requirements that you have to tabulate on the table, because they're really not a traditional typical lot.
Yeah, and in addition, due to, with the housing crisis and the need for, you know, the pastor's goal to have housing for the pastor, and also income for the church, you know, this is an opportunity to improve, increase housing.
I understand.
City of Millbrae.
Right, I understand. So, what I was trying to get at is, you know, there's setback requirements, and then they're there for good reasons, right? So, my question is, between the church and the subject property, subject building, I should say, what is the difference in terms of the distance between the two buildings as proposed?
Between these two buildings? It's, it's about 10 feet. So, like right now, if this were a typical lot, there would be, they, right now, they have, I believe they have five feet on that. We'll take a look at the, we can take a look at the plans.
Is it attached in the map?
It's better to look at the plans when we pull that up.
I look at the proposed site plan, I don't see, I don't see 10 feet there.
Yeah, okay, let me, without me guessing, let me look at the plans.
But just to clarify the record, to the zoning at, for 121 Willow, it is the same zoning as?
R2 zone.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, if you don't know offhand, we can probably ask the applicant a little bit later. These are just hard fact daters, right? So, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is, some of these setbacks are there for good reasons, right? Some of them are fire-co-related, so they could be important. Well, instead of taking too much time, has any other commissioner have any other comments about the staff presentation?
No.
Okay, I understand. But any questions for the staff? Catherine?
Yes, so the setback between that building and the preschool next door is 10 feet. This project and the plans were reviewed by Public Works, Building and all city departments, and the setback as it is now is in compliance with fire requirements.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Fielding? Thank you. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? Please, yes, podium, please.
I'll just, there you go, I'll just leave the presentation up for you, in case you want to go through, yeah, to just go through the presentation, use the arrows.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Reverend Beth Katamatory. I am the pastor at New Vision United Methodist Church. Thank you so much for having us here this evening, as we are considering this remodel and rebuild of the property here. The house in question was built in 1918, and the church acquired it and the surrounding properties in 1924. We bought the property actually from the Millbrae School Department, because this was the site of the original one-room schoolhouse, which was Millbrae's first school, and that's where the church worshipped for a number of years, until the first sanctuary was built, and then the second sanctuary was dedicated in Christmas Eve of 1949. So we're coming up on our 70th anniversary in that worship space. So as Sam noted, this is a part, in part, to provide housing for pastors. That's one of the requirements of the United Methodist Church, is to have pastors housed in their communities. That is both to ensure that parishioners have easy access to the pastors, as well as to, in the effort that pastors be actively engaged in the communities in which they are serving. And as we all know, their housing is very much an issue here in the Bay Area, and so that is why we are in this effort. And then the addition of a second floor, the additional unit, both to provide some financial for us, some profit for us, since we are a nonprofit, to help supplement our budget, as well as do what we can to be good neighbors, and to try and help out to ease the housing issues within our community. Towards that end, we have talked with all of our neighbors, and as you've heard, they are supportive of this project. We have worked with Sam and Brad to improve that Willow side of the home, to boost its appeal. We aim to be good neighbors. There's a lot that we do here in the community as a church, in terms of providing a preschool for kids in our community. We provide space for all sorts of things, like second harvest, food bank twice a month, and things like that. So we both seek to be good neighbors, and to be an asset in our neighborhood and in this community. I think that's all I have. Is Pierre, is our chair of the board of our trustees, is there additions?
I would like to have Albert over there.
If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium.
Again, thank you very much for having us here tonight, and Sam, thank you, and Brad, thank you very much for working with us. And I just wanted to have the floor for Albert, our engineer, just in case the commissioner have any question of him, and if you have any question of us. Like the pastor said, our heart is in the right place, and the history, if you take a look at how we acquired all these property, and how it became one deed of trust, made the building a little complicated on how to plan this whole thing, but, so...
Well, we appreciate you being a part of our community. Thank you. Does your engineer want to make a few statements?
Yes, sure. Again, I also like to thank Sam for helping us out with this project. He was very insightful and very attentive in helping us with this work. One of the big issues we have with the setbacks is, the property was originally set up to face Chadborn Street. And by changing this direction to say that it's now the front of the building is on Willow Street, it really puts a severe constriction on the design of the building. It pushes the Willow Street side in about five feet, and it pushes the back of the building. By doing that, it offsets the upper floor from the lower floors, putting it much more difficult to structurally support this upper floor by this offset. It would include a lot, additional cost to the building, plus it would create some odd architecture by doing this different front and side on the two different floors. So with working with Sam in creating this new development, we thought we enhanced the Willow Street side, which right now is just a plain front side, and we would increase the appeal of the building as it is. The project is for a community that really, excuse me, the project helps the community in that the pastor will be on-site for their parishioners that are in the community. Do you have any questions?
Please. Mr. Wong, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, question for the design aspect. So normally, during our public hearings, you know, we're trying to balance the rights of neighboring properties and community, and we appreciate you working with the staff to make it more architecturally appealing, and you're a corner lot, so, you know, and plus it's a church and a business, so we want it to be appealing and welcoming to the neighbors. But also, for the neighbor next door, my concern is that it's a very large, massive duplex, and it's, you know, to the south of the neighboring property. So I'm afraid that, I'm not sure if they raised it, but I'm going to raise it. What considerations have you given towards their lights, allowing to have light, because you're blocking all southern light to that part of the neighborhood? And then also, I don't see any, usually we look at the privacy issues, so like the windows, if they look down on the neighboring property, or making sure that the windows aren't aligned, just what other considerations have you given toward that property, whether it's drainage and sloping, or any other considerations to protect that property?
We were trying to, basically, we're following the footprint of the floor below. We were extending the walls up, the side setback would be five feet or three and a half feet, so the difference is only a foot and a half difference if we were to follow the setback requirements. We have a sloping roof to minimize the mass along that edge. We have spoke to the neighbor, and the neighbor has no issues. We have not, we are not setting anything back along that edge.
All right, I think just that, you know, we're in a special situation, and, you know, I'm not sure the mentality of the homeowner, I don't really want to speak on what they're thinking, but just, if I were in that neighboring property, I would see that, you know, I'd have a lot of issues with light being blocked from my property, and just concerns, just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's happy, and that...
The issue along that side, as it is, right now, the building is approximately the same height as the building on 400 Chadborn. And if we go up, it would not be diminishing any of the light along the property, because that is on its blind side as it is. Its front is on Willow Street, not facing Chadborn in any way. So that's a blocked side of the Willow Street property, and by going up, it's not going to take any more light away from that property.
And then also, do you have more architectural drawings? I know there's a nice rendition here, it looks like there's maybe a fountain in the front, but I don't see any other architectural drawings in the package, maybe we'll need to talk.
There should be elevations on all four sides.
I see the plan drawing, but I was just hoping to see more commitment. You know, this rendering here is very nice, with some landscaping, just want to, you know, would like to see it really in drawings, about what the actual plans are going to be and the commitments.
Yeah, I think the plans are included in the set.
And then I noticed that there's also some notes, such as, drainage shall be retained on-site or to pervious surface. So to me, you know, it's one or the other, runoff drain away from the building shall be 5 percent minimum slope in pervious area, and/or 2 percent minimum slope on hardscape. So there's a lot of conditional statements in here, that it seems to imply that it really doesn't have a set plan for drainage, or for architectural completeness.
And I would just note on that point, that, you know, again, this is the design review permit process, and then if it were to be approved, they would go onto the plan check process, where engineering would review our urban runoff standards, and do the calculations, ensure that all that runoff is handled properly.
Very well. Anybody else, any other questions for the applicants at this point?
I just have a quick question, because on the large plans, I'm seeing a date of 7/18. Is that correct?
July 6, 2018?
Yeah.
Okay. Any question is?
My question is, is this, it looks like it's the current plan, especially the last page, but I'm just seeing this 7/18 on so many of the pages.
That's probably an error, because that's when we initially started the project.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I presume that, but...
Perhaps Commissioner Quig, take a look at top right-hand corners?
Yeah, and then, which page actually shows the next-door neighbor on Willow? Which page of these actually shows, and I would tend to think that's the northwest side?
Is it on the site plan, I would believe?
I think it's northwest, isn't it, right here?
Right, our elevation does not show the Willow Street, the adjacent neighbor on the Willow Street property.
It doesn't.
It does, our elevation does not.
That would be really interesting to see, because you're over here saying that you've talked to them, and it's not taking anything away from them, but it would be nice for us to see what it looks like on this side.
Commissioner Quig, I noticed that it doesn't have that building layout or footprint on the big drawings, but on the presentation, they do have it listed on presentation, slide number three.
Wait a minute, I've got it. Which page?
Slide number three. However, yes, I agree, we would like to see that in the drawings.
Yeah, I mean, you brought up the question.
I mean, when you say you want to see it, you mean like the footprint of the next-door building?
Well, with the new changes, yeah, I see it on three, but what does it look like with the new plans? Is it just straight up?
Well, along that side, the, along the property line, yes, it is just straight up.
It is just straight up?
Correct.
It's a three-story wall.
Could we had, that's, yeah, I saw that, and I was wondering if that was the look on the other side, too?
So we...
Because that building next door on Willow is set back most likely 20 feet, or at least 15?
Yeah, we'll double-check that. So that was, you know, obviously, when we were talking with the applicant, looking at the property at 121 Willow, one of the things we note is, there is, there's some space in the front yard, so there's a portion of the front entry to that home is set well back, almost back to in line with where the school is. So where the new addition comes up, sort of, would be adjacent to where their front yard spaces.
Yeah, I see that, and he's got a nice picture of it here.
Sure, exactly, so...
But that's existing, right?
That's correct, yeah.
And it's just going to go straight, flat up another story?
Correct, I think so.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody? If nobody else, I have a simple question. You have a pretty prominent deck facing Willow.
Correct.
That happens to be in the exception area, is that correct?
That is correct.
I want to see, I want to hear from you, what consideration goes into this when you designed that deck, and also the stair that goes from first story to the second story, which is also very prominent from the Willow side.
Right, the idea was to create some outdoor space for the second floor, and because of the existing configuration of the front of the building, it wasn't really, it didn't really lend itself for putting the outdoor space towards Chadborn Street. So we created the deck, on both floors, actually, so it, the occupants have an area to come out and enjoy the space.
So other than the deck, what other open space, other than the front yard, or, what is it going to be considered, rather than being southeast-facing side, right, the Chadborn side of it?
Correct, there's the front setback, the original front setback of the building on the Chadborn side.
So that's about the only open space available?
That is correct.
Other than the decks?
Right.
Okay, because you really lack sort of a traditional backyard space, what happens to be on the north side, had it been considered the back, the rear?
Correct.
But obviously, in this case, the east side of it being considered the front. Okay, all right, thank you. I don't have any public comment slips for this particular item. Does anybody want to speak about this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment for 7A. Who wants to begin?
I like the project. I think it makes sense, the exception doesn't bother me, just given the original shape of the building, the history of the building, the church and other buildings right next door, its location in an R2, adding an extra unit is a beautiful idea. I like this project.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I must say that staff's changes made a large difference to the project. The outdoor decks don't bother me so much, just looking at it from the corner, with the stairs and a lot of cement there are pretty massive. The fellow, or the people at Willow, don't seem to be concerned. To me, that's a huge, I'm surprised they haven't requested any changes to that. Have you discussed that at all? I mean, I see you did a lot on the side of Chadborn, but that wall on the other side, actually, next door, have you talked with staff about maybe softening up that up a little bit, that large?
Which part are you talking about?
Huh?
Which part?
The part that we're talking about there, right next to the house next door on Willow.
The north side? Next to the Willow neighbor? Okay?
I mean, I think the front looks great. I'm actually there every day, using your facilities, but, and I can, I mean, we need to do something, so I mean... to do something, so I mean, the fact that it's a second unit is, is fine. My concerns, it looks a little bit heavy with all the cement in the front, the stucco, and if you had discussed that other wall facing the house next door with some kind of softness, maybe with even extra plantings or something, I don't know.
If you can come to the podium for your responses, thank you.
It looks like a big wall.
When we were doing the discussion on the project, we were thinking of using different materials in order to soften the look. At this point, we decided to go with, with possibly same stucco with different colors in order to make the building look less massive. If the commission would like us to explore other materials, we can do that, too.
To me, it seems like anybody driving up Willow is going to actually, visually is going to see a great big wall.
We... Go, go ahead.
So Diana is our neighbor to that side, and she and I and her husband had a really nice conversation last week, and we have a fence between our properties that is covered with ivy and some other things, and while the ivy may not survive the construction process, and neither of us are terribly sad to see ivy go, we are planning to make sure that there is some sort of a privacy screen between the two buildings, and Diana and her husband were, were very pleased with the overall design of the, of the house that we are proposing.
Yeah, I just keep thinking, you know, driving up the street and you're going to go, oh, you know...
And it actually will look better than it currently does because currently, the, it's really very, very boxy, because the Willow side is completely flat, and then it's a flat roof. With this, having the Willow side articulated, and then we're going to have a different elevations of sloping roof, I think it will look much more attractive than what it does actually currently.
Okay. Those are kind of my comments.
One other thought, too, is if the commission would like us to put some sort of planting there, we're not against something.
Yeah, absolutely. I like plants.
Ms. Cho?
Okay, I would agree with Commissioner Davis. I really like the project, I like that it's adding extra housing, which I think we all know we need, and actually adding two parking spaces, too, so I think, which is great for that area. And I do commend the staff, you know, thank you to the staff because I think it makes a big difference, the different, the addition, the revised rendering, so that was great to be able to break up the massing. I do agree, it would be nice to have either some kind of landscaping or just make sure that privacy, not just for privacy, but also just for appeal, so I don't know if that's something that we need to see, or to just assume that it will happen, but I, I'm fine either way, but I think it seems like they're working on it with the neighbors, so that's a good thing. I have one other comment that I can't remember, so I'll, I'll stop with that.
Commissioner Wong, would you like to make a few comments?
I think that it's a wonderful project, I think it's great, there's a great story behind this with the original school, 1918, was it, 1920? I think it'd be great to have a little, you know, in the olden days when biblical people staked out land, they put little monuments, it'd be great to have a little monument or a plaque there and show some historical context, gather interest. I think also, though, that, you know, sometimes the neighbors, even though they're amenable to the project, you know, they may not have some insight into the development or have as much imagination of what the impacts might be, hence, hence we're here. And to me, the rendering is nice, but I would really like to see the rendering from the northern side and what the neighbor would see, and there's more concerns about lighting and privacy issues, and, you know, for our staff, you know, we had a package prepared of standard drawings that we would like to see for projects, and that included landscape and included alignment of other buildings, so we could see the window alignment and make sure that there's no windows staring right into each other. And to me, this package is, you know, for any package, I'd want to see a complete package and an accurate package so that I know exactly what I'm looking at, and I just don't think I can approve this package as it is because I don't see those elements being addressed or being given as a rendering to understand what the true impact is on the neighbors.
I'm sorry, through the, I remembered my other comment. So there was a note in here that there is an encroachment permit required from Public Works for the second driveway. Is that, has that been discussed, or is that just not a big deal, and I just want to make sure?
Yes, that has been reviewed by Public Works, and they would, at the time of a building submitted, be applying for the encroachment permit for the, for the driveway curb.
Okay, and we don't need to add that as a special condition?
No.
Okay, great.
Okay. As far as I'm concerned, I think the project is fine, given the fact that, you know, it's providing additional unit as to the housing stock, that's a good thing. I would support having a secondary unit for the church as well to have extra funding so that you can continue to serve our community, I can appreciate that. So for the most part, you know, from a statistics perspective, all the things comes in that I like to see, it is fine. From a design perspective, you know, when I look at this project and I look at the rendering, it looks like the stairwell system and the decks in the front, it's going to be a very prominent feature of this building, especially right at the corner between Chadbourne and Willow. To me, when I look at this, it's, it's like, it's like, it looks like a huge apartment building, when I stand in front of the corner, just looking at the rendering by itself, right? If I were to stand at the street corner, looking at this building, I'm trying to see if there is ways to make it, I couldn't pick the right word, less apartment-like, you know, more of a house-looking-like building, to make it a little bit more, because you have the exterior stairs that walks up. You know, it, it looks almost like a, you know, a six-unit apartment building where you have this terrace on the outside. I'd like to sort of see if there's a creativity in there, possibly, to make it more appealing, if the applicant can comment on that. And there's no way for you to put in internal stairs?
And a set of internal stairs would take a large part of the, this floor area of the building. We're basically just continuing up the existing staircase that's, and continuing the area that, in which you go up in the existing house right now. We change that would be a great, we would basically have to reconfigure the, the complete downstairs and take a large chunk of the, the floor area for an internal staircase.
So right now, the stairwell is not being counted as an FAR? Is that correct? But the decks would be, right?
Yes, the, the decks are counted for FAR, but the stairways, stairwells are not counted for FAR according to Millbrae Code.
Yeah, and the deck just so happens to be in the setback area where you need an exception? I don't know, it's...
The entrance bothered...
Yeah, and the entrance bothers me, and the decks bothers me a little bit. I think, you know, especially in being in the setback area, whereas we require an exception. It looks like it's protruded quite a bit outside, too, because I think... My, here we go. So right now, so right now, the front of the building is about 15 feet from the property Without the deck, it's about 13, but with the deck, it's about seven, right? So that becomes a majority part of the encroachment, if you, if you understand what I'm trying to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I wanted to say, the, the decks are not in addition to the existing floor footprint of the building, we've actually pulled the walls back, so that space is already sort of enclosed and will actually be opened up now, instead of having solid walls, and by creating, the decks creates more airiness?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Because that is, in the, if you look at the originals, that's where sort of the living room area is, there's a fireplace, a chimney there, so that is what we're taking out and pushing that wall back a little bit to create this open space, this outdoor living area.
Because I think if you were to pull back the deck a little, right, it will be less protruded, less intrusive to the setback area in the front. I understand that the front, the definition of the front sort of...
Right, I understand.
...toss a big wrench into the whole calculation. It is not an easy lot to design on, given the fact that now the front edge being, you know, mandated to be on Willow.
The technicality of the, the oddity of our, our layout, yes.
Right. Any opportunity to pull back the deck a little bit, because I don't think that will play into your financial so much?
That would change the, the footprint of the building, though.
That would change the...
Footprint of the, yeah.
It won't change the footprint of the building because you still have the first, the ground floor.
So what I'm saying is that this... I don't understand how you...
If you just pull back, if you pull back the deck, right? Because right now...
Which decks are you talking about?
You just mean the upper, upper deck, right?
Upper deck.
Just the upper deck.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, there's a two-level decks, on the first floor and your second floor, and then, do you call that a basement? The one where your garages are?
Those decks don't bother me as much as the front.
Yeah, you call it the lower floor on A1 dot two.
The other, the other way we could possibly do is pull back the roof, pull back this roof so that... So the, the one thing we can do is, we are extending the roof on the, on the upper floor out over the deck.
Correct.
We could pull that roof back to make it, to make it soften up that, that face of the building, so there would be, instead of a covered deck, it would be an open deck.
An open deck? Yeah. I don't know how the commissioner feels about it, but I, I like to see that deck pulled back a little bit so that it will be less intrusive into the Willow side of it.
I don't find it intrusive, and I think it's important for these people to have a little outside space to hang out in. It's just for livability.
To me, the, the decks on the Willow side don't bother me, I think those are fine. I think opening the top might be a really good idea. To me...
The set of stairs?
Yeah, the stairs are what are a little, I don't think there's anything you can do.
Well, the other, we can, I mean, we can make the stairs an open stair rather than a partially closed stair, so you would see the rise and run, and you would see a railing coming around the perimeter there.
You know, that might soften it up, that might make a big difference, instead of all of that stucco there.
Correct, correct.
Is it wood stairs or is it steel?
It was going, steel railing, and it's a tile, right now, it's tile on wood, but we can make it an open steel structure or wood structure for that matter.
I think that would off, would make a big difference, do you think? I mean, staff, please, help me.
Yeah, no, no, and I appreciate the conversation that's going on, I mean, when I look at it here more carefully, I do think, and I understand what we're trying to solve, but there is a fair amount of stucco on that wall when you come up to that first level, that if that opened up, it might really lighten up that front elevation.
It would just make such a huge difference, and no one's using that space there anyway, is it?
No.
What about landscaping? I mean, if you just had some taller...
Yeah, I, I think personally, I think opening it up would be wonderful. The decks on the other side, to me, they need someplace to go out, and, and, yeah, I think that might make a big, I think it's going to make a big difference, but...
So, so in this rendering, it doesn't have, we actually do have a cherry tree in this, if you look at the rendering here, there's this like little gray circle patch, there's a cherry tree in there, so there is some, you know, landscaping there.
Right, but all of, I mean, you've got the brick, and then you've got all that stucco, to me, if it was open, it would just...
No.
Personally, I think you can work with staff to kind of soften everything up, including the side on Willow.
So you're okay with, with the deck the way it is?
The ones...
On, on the Willow side?
Yes, that's the one that people are going to have to go out and have some fresh air, yes.
You're okay with them being covered also?
And, and being what?
Being covered, covered.
Yes, that's, I don't have a problem with that either.
Neither do I.
So what kind of modification, you're, you're looking for the staircase?
Yeah, I think maybe opening that staircase as he suggested would, you're not losing any space.
If that would please the commissioner, that would, we're, we're open for that.
I mean, you're not losing anything.
No, 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 totally understand.
It would just make it less heavy.
And just, just, just for the record also, we are a nonprofit organization, we're working with a certain budget, not a developer that will make it up on the next project.
Well, that's why I'm trying to think of something that isn't going to be...
We're not trying to make it difficult.
Thank you.
Right. And the less deck there is, the less money you have to spend on it. Does anybody have any comment about that? I mean, it's just a very prominent feature, it's right at the corner of the building. It looks like there's a lot of wrought iron and a lot of railings, to me.
Well, there is a lot of rail, but...
Do you think if there was a different material instead of railing, would that maybe?
To me, to me, the deck protruded out through the building by about six feet, it looks like a very prominent feature, and it's the majority of part of the encroachment that is they're seeking exception for, so that's why I'm trying to see if there's a way for us to reduce that, because they are seeking an exception, right? And, and, you know, without a big of a deck, they can still achieve what they need to achieve, you know, from a financial perspective, the pastor can still have the space to live. I mean, instead of six feet, maybe three feet, you know, you can, you can tuck it back in a little bit.
How large are those stacks? Yeah, that's...
Six by 14.
Six. Six isn't very wide.
Six feet deep? Yeah, that's not...
Eighty, eighty, eighty-four, eighty-three square feet?
But six feet deep?
Six feet, protruded out six feet to the street.
Six feet isn't very wide.
So you're saying go to three feet?
There might not be...
I don't think that's too, yeah, I don't think that's functional, especially if you're talking about having, you know, probably church...
They really lack open space there as a, as it is as well.
So I, I don't have a problem with the decks, I think reducing it is not going to help that much, but I think the, that's why I do see about maybe they're opening it up, or maybe the railings to change it to something else, or something more, make it more residential, if that's...
I mean, I spent an hour looking at this plan, and the most important part of that I look at it is the whole, this railing in the front.
The what?
All these railings in the front, at the corner of the building.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, if, if there's...
It looks like there's a lot of railing there. I just kind of, kind of, from a design perspective, I can't really get past that.
Right, but then I think what would be a good, I mean, if there's something to suggest, that would be great. We don't have to design it for them, but I'm just saying materials, maybe a different material might... Be more transparent. Transparent, yeah, like a, yeah, maybe, make, like a, with wood stairs, and then...
Brad Doran, project sponsor as well. Sorry I haven't had an opportunity to talk tonight, thank you for your time. I was thinking, I'm a builder as well as a designer, I was thinking maybe, maybe making more of a little bit of a feature, rather taking away, why don't you kind of add to it, right? And so you maybe incorporate something from top to bottom so that the handrail is part of that corner, right? So you wouldn't have to do it in steel or railing material, you could do it in like wood slats or something with a inside handrail, but it becomes more of the building rather than an eyesore. I mean, I hear what you're saying. So you could do something in wood, wood slats with an inside handrail. Try to get away from the ornamental steel, you know, thought. I wouldn't suggest glass. It's not cost effective.
Doesn't go with the style.
It does not go with the style either. So I think there's ways to improve upon that. But I'm just thinking of costs, you know, same circumstances.
Understand. I mean, I understand cost is a big consideration there, but it's also a very prominent corner. You know, I think here's what I would suggest. If it's okay with the Commissioner, I'll leave it up to the staff to work with the applicant with that little part of it. And because I just hope that it doesn't look so apartment-like at that corner. As a design now, as I look at this rendering, it looks like some of those 1945, you know, six-unit apartment building with this big terrace on the outside. Just prefer it not to look that way, if you understand what I mean. So, but having said that, I'll leave it up to the staff to work with the applicant with the remaining of the design.
I think that staff can work with them with just that little front there. I think personally, I think opening it up would make a huge difference because to me that, all that stucco above there just fills it up so much, so.
Yeah, and I get that as well. And I think there's a combination of the two elements that are playing-- there's a contrast there that's going on. Yeah. So I think we can certainly take a look at it and come up with some ideas.
Very well.
And I just want to point out one thing. Just the angle of the rendering is making it look as bad as it possibly can. And when I cover up the willow side and pretend I'm standing on Chadbourne, it doesn't look that bad. And then I cover up Chadbourne, and I'm on willow, it doesn't look that bad. So I think that's part of, that may be playing into it as well. You know, everything's going to look different in the real world, too.
Okay. I think we beat this horse to death. How about a motion?
Actually, one last. While you're mentioning that--
Go ahead, Commissioner Wong.
Yes, I'm drawing A1.5.
A what?
I'm seeing that the staff look at the calculation for the family room and halls. It says 103 square feet. However, you know, just from the dimensions that are given there, there's at least 14 feet length, and then the front's probably about 12, 13 feet. And then on the previous drawing, also, if it's a very similar floor plan to the bottom floor plan, the bottom floor plan listed at 287 square feet. Just the sizing of that family room halls says 103 square feet. That would make it larger than the bedroom next to it. But the bedroom next to us has 140 square feet. And yet the drawing makes the family room look much bigger than the bedroom. So just double check on the calculation there.
I think these numbers provided by the applicant, by the architect.
Okay.
So your issue was the size of the family rooms?
Right. Double check this. Double check the size of the second floor family room.
Yeah, it's like a 14 dot 14, right? Numbers off a little bit.
Okay.
Neither here nor there, but from a design perspective, but--
Okay.
No, it's--
I mean, it didn't need to be done right now, but if they're going to work with the applicant, then just double check the calculation.
Yeah, it's about 200 square feet roughly. But in any rates, any other comments from anybody else?
Make a motion to approve the design review permit application to allow the conversion of a single-family residence to a three-story duplex and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required upper floor setback to a residence located in the duplex residential R2 zoning district. What's the word I'm looking for? With conditions of approval attached.
Yeah.
Second.
Oh, wait, wait. The conditions of approval, but we want staff--
We want staff to work with the applicant to make that big stucco thing, and perhaps the railings look better.
Right. To soften the stairwell. And I think it's important that you work with staff on that wall. So when you come up, it looks much more attractive. So those would be the two conditions.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Too late for that.
Sorry. Sorry. I'll take it back if you really want it.
No, it's okay.
You sure?
Moving things along.
Very well.
We got a motion, we got a second. Can we get a vote, please?
You need to-- Did you need to vote?
Oh, I didn't vote, yeah.
We got a folder one with Commissioner Wong dissenting. Subject to-- Project's been approved, subject to 10 days' right to appeal. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. Next is item, public hearing 7B, 400 Palm Avenue. It's a design review permit application to allow a first-floor renovation and a second-story addition and a setback exceptions request to allow less than the minimum required upper floor size setback of a residence in a single-family R1 zoning district. Mr. Feeding?
I'm sorry. Through the chair. I just wanted to, before the staff starts, just to do, for sake of public disclosure, just to make sure the applicant actually did invite me to their home a few months ago in August, and just to give some suggestions and thoughts about it and walk through. I told them I did so. I gave them some thoughts and did not make any guarantees, and I made clear to them that I could not make any guarantees, and this would have nothing to do with my decision. So I just wanted to, and it's just a public disclosure, just put that out there.
Anybody else want to make any disclosures? One more disclosure is that the applicant, Mr. Deng, did speak to me in my office with regard to his proposal as well. Neither did I promise anything at all. Okay.
That's very unusual.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's-- that's very unusual that that would be happening, I would think. I don't remember that happening ever before, where two commissioners had been to the home and discussing the project with people.
I actually did not go through his home.
Oh, but you still--
He-- Mr. Deng-- Mr. Liu actually wanted to speak to me in my office, and I gave him 15 minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's just very interesting, because in my 20 years, I've never had that kind of disclosure.
I've actually had a couple people ask, and I didn't think any-- and I always say, I can't tell you yes or no, anything like that, but they're just to have a kind of a, an idea of what, you know, what they should consider. That's basically it. And so people have approached me, and I didn't think that there was anything wrong with it, but I try to make sure to disclose it in any case and not promise anything.
And in all fairness, we are actual resources to the city and to our constituents as well, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I just, you know, I'd say that, you know, in my experience, that is fairly common that an applicant may reach out to commissioners. You're certainly under no obligation to speak with them if you don't want to, but I certainly do appreciate disclosure, disclosing any ex parte communication, so I appreciate--
And like I say--
That's necessary.
--this has happened in the past, and no one ever said anything.
Mr. Feeding?
Okay. Before I start, I'd just like to mention that the project narrative and the rendering was updated by the applicant last minute. So you have that added to your-- the planning commissioners added to your folders--
Yes.
--to accurately reflect the project numbers as to the plans, and the rendering windows are corrected. The project is located at 400 Palm Avenue. The home was built in 1948. It's located between Hillcrest Boulevard and Chadbourne Avenue in the Highland subdivision within the subcentral area of Milbury. The property is a 5,760 square foot interior lot, or corner lot, zoned in the R1 single-family residential zone. The architectural styles in the surrounding neighborhood consist of predominantly Spanish Mediterranean-style split-level homes with a mixture of open gable hip and cross-hip type roofs. Homes in the neighborhood include homes built in the 1930s, 1940s, and 1950s. There's a variety of homes, many of them built in the 1930s. The homes have exterior material consisting of a combination of stucco and cement plaster and clay tile roof parapets. There are no bay views from the project site, and due to its location on relatively flat terrain east of the hills located west of the spur trail. The existing residence is a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom, split-level, two-story single-family residence with a walkway to the main entry from Palm Avenue and a two-car garage accessed from Taylor Avenue. The two-story split-level home includes a garage level, lower level, their lower floor two-car garage with half bathroom. The main level, which is the first floor entry porch off of Palm Avenue, which includes a living room with fireplace, dining room, kitchen, hall, family room, bathroom with a stairway to the garage level, lower level, lower floor, and a stairway up to the split level. The split level consists of two bedrooms with closets and one bathroom. No changes are proposed for the existing front driveway, lawn area, and plantings. The residence provides a two-car garage as required for the single-family residential district. The proposed project will create a five-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bathroom, two-story, split-level single-family home. The project will renovate the existing main level first-floor dining room by removing the dining room walls to create a dining room open to the kitchen and renovate the bathroom adjacent to the bedrooms one and two. The living room wood burning fireplace would be replaced with a gas fireplace insert with exhaust vent on the roof, and the exterior chimney would be removed. The new 837 square foot upper level second-floor addition will include three bedrooms with closet, closets, one master bathroom, and one hallway connecting the three bedrooms and the stairs to the split level below. Two skylights will be added on the roof to provide natural light to the hallway connecting the three upper-level bedrooms. The garage level, lower level, lower floor will remain unchanged. The floor area of the residence will increase from 2,230 square feet to 3,067 square feet with a new upper floor addition. The applicant is requesting a setback exception, and I will go ahead and proceed to show you that, show you where that exception would be. Finally, there's neighbor support. There were five adjacent neighbors that received consultation forms. Four forms were returned in support, and one resident did not respond, so a certified mail receipt was provided. The upper floor setback exception is requested to create an upper floor within the rear split-level lower roof area to integrate with the existing home architectural design and to be compatible with the neighborhood character. This is the location in the site plan and the location of where the addition would go. This is the front of the home. Well, it's, yeah, it's the side on the Taylor Avenue, and then on this side, you have the willow side. Sorry, Palm, Palm Avenue side. This is the garage level, the existing garage level and the proposed, where there's no change. This will remain the same. This is the main level existing, and then the main level proposed renovations, where the kitchen will be opened up to the dining room area, and then the renovation of the bathroom at the split level. And then this is the proposed second floor, upper floor addition. The exception request is on the west elevation for a zero-foot setback where there's seven feet required, and this would be along this edge, 43 linear feet. On the south elevation facing Taylor, the exception is requested to be six feet when 10 feet are required for 14 linear feet. So there is some setback here, but they're short the full 10 feet. They're doing six feet setback. So staff worked with the applicant, had several meetings to discuss the project and the design. This-- Many of the homes, the corner lots in this neighborhood, have split-level type designs and do not have setbacks on the sides. But staff felt that the proposed setback needed to-- would work better if there was some breakup of the massing and some architectural features included. So staff worked with the applicant to look at having these roof features so that it gives the appearance of a setback. On this side, there is a six-foot setback. And one of the things that the applicant is doing is, on the upper floor addition, they are keeping siding as the exterior material to match the split-level siding. And then the roof lines mimic the existing roof lines, so the design of the upper floor integrates well with the existing home. This is the north rear existing elevation. This is the proposed north rear elevation. This is the existing right elevation and existing east-- I mean, the proposed east elevation. And this is the side where the main entryway is located. So this is the existing showing the chimney, and then this is the proposed elevation. So you could note here that although this is where the exception request is being requested for this side, there is an eve here, and there is a larger eve here, roof eve here separating the lower and the upper floor levels. There's also a change in materials, so we have the siding on the upper level and then the stucco below. And so the design fits in very, very nicely with the existing design of the home. This is the existing subject property, and this is the rendering. You can see the features of the eve here, the six-foot setback. And then this is-- there's no setback here, but with the eve, it does allow for an appearance of a setback while still allowing the applicant to meet their needs for the areas for the bedrooms on the upper floor. This is some isometric drawings. I've circled the location of where the upper floor addition would be. The roof plan does a very nice job of integrating the addition with the existing split level on the east elevation. The applicant, in addition to the other materials, submitted some information on other properties within the neighborhood. These are corner lots that have similar architectural design without any setbacks. So you'll notice here 360 Elder, the chimney, and then the flush, first and second floor. Here's another example, 351 Elder, 4088 Hillcrest, 500 Hillcrest. Again, similar corner lots with split-level design, but no setbacks, but-- having the siding in similar styles. 300 Taylor Boulevard, 200 Taylor Boulevard. Again, two floors with no setbacks. And these are some other examples. So the applicant, by designing this project and requesting the setback exception, is attempting to design the home in a way that it integrates with the character of other corner lot homes in the neighborhood while utilizing, you know, materials that would function well with the design of the home. This is the material board. The applicant is proposing an exterior wall of gray with the trim color, a white trim color for the windows, and then the shingles for the home. So at this point, after review of the materials and the plans submitted by the-- So at this point, after review of the materials and the plans submitted by the applicant, staff felt that the proposed design meets the findings for design review permit approval, findings A through D, and that it does meet the setback exception findings for, for the project and that it would not, basically that the findings would not negatively impact adjacent properties and are compatible with the existing home design. At this time, staff recommends that the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony at the, and the findings as presented and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow first-floor renovation and second-story addition and a setback exception request to allow less than the minimum required upper-floor side setback of a residence in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. I'm available to answer questions and we do have the applicant here to speak tonight, I believe so.
Thank you, Mr. Feuding. Anyone have questions for Mr. Feuding at this point? Commissioner Joe?
I'm sorry, did you want to go? Oh, okay.
Commissioner Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, just for clarification, so the front is considered Taylor. Is that, is front Taylor or Palm? I think it's Taylor, right? Is that, I just want to clarify.
Yes, that's correct. The, the front would be the shortest lot width.
So that's the side with the garage?
Right, so that's this side. This is considered the front and then this would be the side and then the interior side.
Okay, so that's why we're looking for, that's, we're calling those the side setbacks.
Right.
These renderings, this is really hard to tell what it is. And then the storyboard, if you look at the rendering you have there, like, I don't see anything for the reddish materi, I don't know what the reddish material is, what the, yeah, it's, it's really hard to tell from that rendering.
Like his question is, do you know what the red looking material is?
What is this red? Yes, thank you. What is this red and?
The, my understanding from the applicant is the red is brick, is the existing brick.
You want to leave it up to the applicant later?
Just an exist, okay.
Yeah, and, and the plan, so the rendering, also the, the rendering, the colors, it would, the, the material board colors are what is being proposed, gray. So the rendering doesn't really show the exact, the color exactly. I think the, the applicant worked on this and he can speak to the rendering.
Okay, because even the color board, it just has the white trim, external siding, and a cowpack, the, the roof.
Yes.
So it's, yeah. Okay, so I'll ask that later and I'll pass this on.
Any more questions, Commissioner Joe? You done? Ms. Quip?
That was my question also. I'm going to go back. Are they going to leave the brick then?
Oh, yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
I'm going to go back and look at it then.
They have, this is the proposed elevation and so we have the brick here and then we have the, the stucco here. So they're, on their, on the plans, they're indicating that they are keeping the brick.
Any more questions, Commissioner?
No.
Anybody?
I do, but I need to kind of think about it.
Okay, we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side? Commissioner Wong, anything?
I'm just kind of looking at the, I guess, particular style of the house and a little bit more modern style, it seems to fit with them in Australia, maybe their grand style, house, neighboring properties.
I thought that some of the other houses on Taylor are more Adelbi style, but it looks like it blends in well with the neighborhood, the architectural features.
Okay. Commissioner Joe, you have additional comments or questions?
Sorry, yeah. So on the side facing, maybe I can, did you discuss at all, so the, the elevation that you have right now, that's the elevation that's facing Palm?
Yes, that's the west left proposed elevation.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that there was some attempt at trying to articulate it out a little bit. Even the window, was there some, was there any consideration of the windows? Because right now what you're getting is a one-wall, and I know they're different materials, but on the, on the left-hand side, and then just two windows stacked on top of each other. Was there any consideration of doing something a little bit different with the windows or something, just to get it, because?
Do you want to ask the applicant on that later?
I'm asking him if he, if they discussed that at all, because he did, the staff did work with them in terms of kind of changing the materials, so I'm just curious if that came up at all.
It, it did not come up. They, these are the bedrooms and so I think the idea was they, they want to have one window for this, for this bedroom and then they've got a window facing the backyard area, so they have the light from the backyard there.
Okay.
That, that's something that, you know, we didn't discuss like the, the exact window.
That wasn't discussed, okay, thank you.
No, but, but we did discuss more like the exterior material, material and the roof line, the roof lines and trying to, you know, provide more architectural exterior features.
Okay, and was there any discussion of landscaping for this on that side?
Yes, and we'll, staff asked them about, you know, if they had plans to improve landscaping, they, they-
We don't have anything yet?
Not have any plans, no.
Okay, thank you.
They have some existing landscaping that they're going to keep.
Thank you, I'm good for now.
Any other questions for Sam? Thank you.
Yeah, except.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have, you have questions for Mr. Feuding?
No.
Okay.
I was having a hard time seeing the front, the sidewalk, and a little piece of grass was there, I think, right?
Can we have the applicant?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Ruftat. I represent the RDS, the design team. And the homeowner, his wife, and kids, and mother are here to answer some questions after. I just basically addressed the commission just about the, the setback exception and the, the uniqueness of the lot and, and the, the, the design program, if you will. And of course, due to the growing family, it's, it's essential to try to, in the addition portion of the house, squeeze in the bedrooms. Without a setback exception would be impossible. So integrating the, the design with the split level presented issue number one. Number two was the setback requirements in lieu of getting the setback exception. So we tried to minimize the, the impact of the, of the massing in the bulk of the zero setback by maintaining the existing roof line, if you will, and carrying that through basically to the front and to the rear and on the sides. And also integrating the window bay on the front bedroom by centering that with the relocated living room window. And integrating the roof lines was the other major design solution, if you will, in kind of integrating the house into a whole, into a more harmonious unit. So answer to the question about the brick, due to the, the fact that the, the existing topography slopes around the lot from Taylor to Palm, if you will, we'd, we'd definitely like to maintain as much of the brick as possible. There may be some, some issues with, around the front door. There may be some, due to structural engineering and whatnot, maybe it may need to be removed, but the goal is to maintain as much of the existing brick and planters as possible. And there's existing street trees that are providing some screening. So the issue of the, of the additional windows was a consideration. However, we wanted to minimize the impacts to the neighbors and also provide for some wall space for furniture and beds and those kinds of amenities. We actually had an, an additional window in the front bedroom that we've removed in order to get some additional furniture placement, wall space. So having said that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and the homeowner and his family are also here to answer any questions. And I think the homeowner has a, he'd like to address the, the commission as well.
Hey, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Daniel. This is my wife and my mother-in-law, my two kids, and my father-in-law is traveling out of town. So first of all, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present our project to you this evening. So actually, we have been living in Millbury for five years. Five years ago, when we visited, the first time we visited Millbury, we fell in love with this beautiful city, this beautiful neighborhood, and we decided bought, and we bought a house, luckily we bought a, get a house here in Millbury in this nice area. So our second kid, the little one, was actually also born in Millbury and she's three and a half years old. We, after five years, we are more sure that this is a place we want to make our home for the rest of our life, for our kids and also for our parents. And the neighbors are here, are here are very nice. My kids make, make friends with my neighbors' kids and my parents, my in-law parent, parents-in-law, they make friends with those, my neighbors' parents. We feel very happy living here. So, so then, but as you can see, we have, families growing and my in-law parents-in-law are moving to live us, with us, so we can take better care of them as they're getting older. We only have two bedrooms in our home, so that's the reason we are here, that we are requesting, applying for adding another, another three bedrooms to our home, but without a setback exception, it's almost impossible for us to add three more bedrooms. We hope, we, we hope you can consider our application, support our project. By the way, yes, we, we did reach out to Mr. Fang and Mr. Jean before the application because we heard that there, it's going to be very difficult to get a setback exception, so we were just seeking some advice from gentlemen and ladies so we can get better prepared in the design of, in the architectural design. Yeah, thank you very much.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Wong?
For the question for the architect. So, you know, just given that you're requesting this setback exception and given that we have codes requiring setback exceptions for, you know, various architectural features such as massing and so forth, can you describe what elements you included to offset or to mitigate and address those issues in lieu of having no setback?
I, I do a lot of these types of projects throughout the peninsula and the massing is, is always an issue. And what we've done to mitigate the impacts of the addition wall plane, if you will, is the, the addition of the break by the roof line that runs, in essence, around and to the back and integrates to the front. So that is the, that acts as, as, on almost a belly band, if you will, or a, a plain break that's needed in order to mitigate a, a vertical wall plane. So that, that's how we, we attempted to do the, the, basically the adjustment for, for that. And also by extending the porch, removing the chimney, that extends the, the, the front porch, an additional, I think, like three or four feet and redoing the, the brackets. So these are additional features that we hope you find that treat the wall massing issue that you're referring to.
Any more questions, Commissioner Wong?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any other commissioner wish to ask questions to the applicant? I've got three speaker slips for item 7B. Each person gets three minutes. The first person is Ann Schneider, please.
Good evening. Ann Schneider, resident, 406 Palm Avenue. Now, I'm going to start this by saying that I understand that city protocol is that a person wanting to remodel only contacts the house around them. So across the street, catty corner, across the street, and next to them. I'm one house away. And I will say that they're lovely neighbors. We love seeing the kids coming, we love see them on the tricycles and everything like that. However, I have lived in that house on and off, or my mom has lived in that house since 1974. We are one of the Spanish-style houses. And there's some weird reason in this area that on the corners, they save those lots and let them get developed. Our house was originally started in the 20s, finished in 1930. So these houses on the corner are quite different. If you look at the four houses on the corner of Palm and Taylor Boulevard, you'll find that each one of their front doors is actually on Palm Avenue. So your question about what is the front of the house? Well, the front of their house looks really lovely from Taylor and it's got a beautiful long driveway and they are terrific at not parking on Palm Avenue because the house in between us, I'm on record of saying they turned it into a boarding house and there can be as many as eight cars there. So they have been really lovely at not doing that. That said, that house, their house, is really close to the sidewalk to begin with and putting a second floor, I have no problems with making it five bedrooms, even though to me that's a monster home. But adding a second floor with no setback means that every day we will pass a blank wall. Basically, that side of the house, which is to me their actual address, 400 Palm Avenue, is on Palm Avenue, so the front of the house to me is on Palm Avenue, is going to look like the side of a house. It's going to have this big, flat wall with no windows to break up and maybe this little teeny, you called it a, a belly band. We lived in a house in Pacifica that had a belly band. I'm not quite sure what the break looks like. Maybe that's enough, but I don't really get a good idea of that. And we're really concerned that basically what you're putting on the corner of Palm Avenue, which is a very busy street, which is a very attractive street, is going to look like the side of a house. So I really would like to see some changes just with that wall. No problem with sizing, understand the need of it, want to be a good neighbor, and again, they are lovely neighbors. The other thing is, and I'm hardly one to talk because I'm trying to kill the grass in front of my house and because all the dog walkers let their dogs poop on the yard, it's killed the grass. So aside from that, I have plenty of plants, but their planting has subsided from the sidewalk, on both sides of the sidewalk. And I have actually talked to the city public works department about the danger of falling in there. It also traps dog poop and it traps litter, not theirs, but the neighborhood's. So the landscaping really does need to be improved. So with that, just change that wall and we, I would be fine. Thank you.
Take your time. If you need a mobile mic, we can get you one as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? I just want to say one thing, is there's very little land on Palm Avenue, so the landscape- I just wanted to say one thing is, there's very little land on Palm Avenue, so the landscaping will be very important. And we have trees on that street, but the majority of them are diseased, and sometime in the future will have to be torn down and replaced. So, if the trees die, then walking down that, you're walking down and facing a totally blank wall. So, I think something should be done on the landscaping to mitigate the height of that wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Di Chang. I'm the owner of 447 Palm Avenue. My house is on the same street block as this subject house, and I have known Liu's family for two years. My parents are good friends with their parents, and my son is good friends with the two beautiful daughters here. Liu's family is such great and nice people. They helped me out when my smoke detector went out of battery, and they always share freshly picked fruits from their backyard with us. And I, you know, among those, I really loved the apricots. They're really sweet and juicy, and they tell me that if they don't get the setback exception, they would, you know, they will only have the choice of chopping down that apricot tree in order to expand the base level. So, I really hope they get to keep that apricot tree, so I can continue to enjoy those apricots. And I've reviewed their plan of their additions, and it looks really nice. I really hope they get to build their dream home and also live a quality life. So, I wish you would consider approving their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker slips? With that music, we'll stop public comment. Who likes to begin? Mr. Wong?
Yes. So, this house is very similar to the last house we looked at. I mean, in terms of, it's a corner lot. And again, with a corner lot for our city of Melbury, we're looking out of, for the city's best interest, and we would like to see that there are more attractive features for the house on both sides exposed to the streets, because people driving from both streets, down Taylor or down Palm, they will see this corner house, and there's higher visibility, just like with the last building that we saw. So, we need to make sure that there is, we'd like to see more architectural elements to provide more attractiveness, instead of, as the neighbor mentioned, there's a wall with a belly band, and, I don't know, maybe just give more thought into more architectural features, maybe shutters or, I don't know, other elements that might make it more look like the front of a house, rather than just the side of the house in a large, long wall. So, I think, you know, even for your design of the house, you just give a little, you know, the beauty of the house is in the details. So, I would recommend that the owner work with the architect to identify more architectural details and make it more attractive for street appeal, curb appeal. Curb appeal is what it's all about. If we aren't able to have this second-story setback distance, then, again, I'm looking for more other features to offset or in lieu of that second-story setback.
Anybody else?
I have an interesting, I guess. I'm looking at, this one shows one, but I saw one. Let me find it. Someone else can speak.
Does anybody else wants to make a comment? Give it a second.
I'm ready to answer any question.
Okay. On the current site plan, it shows two windows on the bottom level?
Right. Yes, there are two windows on the bottom level. We actually, we are removing one of the window. Yeah.
So, you, you're actually getting, eliminating one of the windows on the bottom floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, especially since I'm hearing, that makes that wall very bare, and especially with the second story there. If you look at the west-left proposed elevation on 4-1?
Oh, yeah. If that's a theme, we can keep that window if that's the only concern. I mean, if that's a, that's a concern, we can keep the, keep that window. We can keep that window if that's a concern.
He's saying that he can keep that window if that is your concern?
Right. And I heard something about needing room for furniture and stuff, but we need something to fill up this spot here, towards the back of the house. I mean, to me, it looks very bare, and you are right on the street. There is not much of a sidewalk there.
Right.
I don't know how the other ones feel, but because we are not having a setback, I just feel...
We, we'd like to bring up that on the side, we have a long, we have some more green band, and we have five feet shrub on the side. We have five feet shrub on the side. It's, it is not in the design, but it's existing landscaping.
It doesn't show them now, though.
Yeah, it's, we are just want to keep the existing one. It's not there. But from the street view, you will see there is shrub, five-foot-high shrub there.
Well, Ms. Krip?
It's look very bare.
Ms. Krip, so I think we're talking about, is it, are you talking about the first story or the second story?
Well, the first story and the second story.
Because the sidewalk doesn't, the width of the sidewalk doesn't change just because the exception that's taken?
Well, I understand it doesn't change, but we're going to have a large wall with no windows above.
You know, what I was actually curious about is when I look at 3-1, when you say that the previous rendering has two windows on the bottom, on the lower-left side of the property?
Right.
Even on the existing main level, doesn't show secondary window already.
Right.
So, I wonder what the secondary window is? If you look at 3-1?
All right, so the, before we have a...
Where the kitchen is?
Secondary window here.
No, first story we're talking about.
Oh, oh, that's here.
Right.
That's this window, actually. This window is what we are going to, we plan to eliminate, this window.
I understand that your proposal eliminates that window, but the existing floor plan doesn't show that window either. I'm looking at 3-1.
This? Yeah, I think it is there. This is the existing. We have two windows here. Yeah.
No, it doesn't.
Sorry.
Look at A3-1.
Maybe you could...
Maybe, maybe it's a question for the architect. Look at A3-1.
Well, irrespective of the floor plan, the existing window is currently there.
Okay.
I, I don't have the set of drawings with me. I can't reference it other than just trying to leaf through it, but there is a window there currently. They opted to remove it due to, again, furniture placement. Also, what's, what's not really shown is the hedge, the existing landscaping. It really breaks down the existing wall, at least the lower wall. Also, the, the addition of the, of the roof plane, the roof line, offers a break. And of course, by adding more and more windows, it, it just adds windows. It doesn't really, that's not really a level of detail, if you will, except, if you want, if you'd care to consider that analogy, because by having a wall and adding a window, you still have a wall. But we're trying to mitigate it by material changes, by colors, and by horizontal elements. So, that's my comment.
I tend to agree with you. However, the shrub at the bottom isn't going to do much, on a much larger wall.
You know, I also thought...
I agree, something vertical would be perfect.
Commissioner, that's correct. One thought that I did have is, I've done, when we've had these instances, is actually introduce maybe a wall element, like a wall trellis, and introduce some, some landscaping that actually covers and kind of plays with the, with the vertical wall elements, if you will. So, that could be another option, if you might accept that as a alternate, if you will, by adding a potential wall element, trellis, that we could introduce a little bit of landscaping on that. And of course, there's always the option of going back to the, the window, but there was a reason why the owner opted to eliminate that, that window.
Commissioner Krip? Any further questions?
He's asking me. Me?
Yes, any further questions?
No.
Okay.
I just would like to see something different. The, the disadvantage to trellises is that if they're not taken care of properly...
They die off?
They die off, and, you know, it just, the concept is wonderful.
Yes.
However, in reality, it, it doesn't really do what we would like it to do, so maybe something else.
Well, would you be willing to, to consider the trellis itself as the architectural element, if you will, in lieu of planting and greenery? Or, there could be some, maybe some planting, maybe a few 25-inch box trees of some sort, or maybe some different kind of landscaping in lieu of the shrubs, perhaps? I mean, we'd be more than happy to work with staff on that, by all means.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just, you know, listening to the conversation and looking at this elevation a bit more, you know, if it is the consensus of the commission that that needs some additional attention, you know, I might recommend that perhaps we continue it and give staff another chance to take a look at that. I've got some ideas here that I think we could work with the applicant to, to really improve that. I think, you know, recognizing now that you basically have two fronts to this property, I think they probably need to be treated as such, so.
Okay.
May I say something? We do have a plan to improve our landscaping, but since the project may take more than six months, so anything, anything we are doing to our landscaping now will die, die if we don't take care of them. So, we plan to spend more effort after the project's finished. And right now, I'm experimenting, planting some roses and peonies in front of my houses, just to let them grow. So, we do want to create a better landscaping around the houses.
Right. Whatever landscaping plan you do intend to put in, you don't necessarily have to do it now, given the fact that you have some constructions ahead of you. I mean, but you can put them on the plan, so that the commission can consider them.
Thank you.
Okay, just hang on there.
Just, just a thought, because we are talking about the fact that it feels like there are two fronts to the house. What if that door, as an idea, if we're thinking about continuing it, were to be widened out a little bit, just so it looks more like an entry door rather than a side door?
The one-fronting palm?
The one-fronting palm, right. Because right now, it just looks, it just look a little door. So, if there's room, maybe where the brick work, I mean, I don't, I don't want to design it, I'm just saying.
That is the main entrance.
Just as a thought, right. So, it is a main entrance, but maybe if the door could be widened, widened out a little bit, that might make it look a little bit, might, might help a little bit with making it look less like a, because I don't think the, it's not just a matter of the wall, but it's a matter of that it looks like a side of a house right now. So, maybe if there is a way to do that, or that, that might help, just as a thought, so.
Yeah, so expanding on that, you know, just to, you know, again, talk with the architect, come up with more ideas, things to make it look more like a welcoming front door entrance. You know, the eve is very long, and it doesn't, it kind of obscures the front door in this rendering right here, so that, you know, if you have, you know, more curb appeal, you can see a nice entrance door, maybe a landing, you know, lights, welcoming lights or porch lights on the side, just making it look more like the front of the house, it has that curb appeal. A little, I'm not suggesting redoing the entire design, it's going to be an expense, but there's probably some things you can much tweak and modify to make it have that front door curb appeal, and look like...
Yeah, for sure. Actually, we, we have a small front porch. We do have a plan to add, add a more grand, more grand porch light on, in front of the front, front door, so which will make it look much nicer. So, currently, the width of the door is, I think, for more than 40 inches, yeah. So, more, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Can we, I missed what he said, sorry. You said you're planning to do...
We are planning to add a more beautiful porch light to decorate the porch, to make the porch, the side look more like a main entrance, yeah.
Porch lights hanging down or standing, or, I mean, fixed, or what are you?
We, yeah, we are, we accept whatever you suggest, which looks better.
You just said you're planning it, so I'm just wondering, what were your, what was your plan?
Well, probably like a bigger porch light, which looks nicer, makes it more like a main entrance.
Hanging down off from the eve or sconces on the side? That's what I'm wondering, on the wall?
On the wall, yeah, mounted on the wall.
I mean, I'm looking at the, you know, the entry porch, the entryway, it doesn't look like it is part of the remodeling effort so much, right? Because, you know, if you were to, I mean, I know there's some suggestions about opening it up, make it wider, make it more welcoming, but, you know, changing that part of that house would change the structural integrity of it, might actually be more...
Worse.
Costly than you think, but, you know. Commissioner speak about it first.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Krip.
I, I hear Mr. Meisner saying that he would like to review, because of the fact he would like to review the plans a little bit more in detail because of the fact of where it is and Palm being the way it is, that he would like to review it also, to make sure that we are getting the best project possible. Therefore, I would think that we should continue it, so that the two of them can work it out, and if there are landscaping in the works, if you could show them on the plans, then that way, we would know what the end project is going to be like.
What are some of the al, well, okay. All right.
No, sorry.
What are, what are some of the things that, you know, under your consideration that you think requires a continuance?
I'm sorry, can you say again?
What are some of the consideration that you're thinking about?
Yeah.
That requires a continuance?
Well, I think that, you know, there, so that's, that's a long elevation, right? I understand the need for the setback request, given where the, how the split level of the house is. So, I think, I think we all kind of understand that part. So, and we appreciate the two-foot break that was put in there. I just don't think that probably went far enough in looking at it again. So, perhaps it could be something like a longer porch along that side, right? So, that wouldn't necessarily change the structure of the, of the home, but it might give an element there. You know, there could be other things, like perhaps, perhaps, the...
You know, there could be other things, like perhaps, perhaps, the introduction of a dormer or two on that side that would give it more of an orientation towards the side. You know, I heard maybe adding some shutters and kind of working with the window schedule, and really just trying to make that pop as if it's the front of the house as well.
You mean like a dormer on the Palm side?
Mm-hmm. And it could be one or perhaps a series of them that kind of would give it that front appearance.
That would, yeah, yeah. I appreciate your comments, and I think we should go ahead and give it another look.
Yeah, let's see what other commissioner has to say.
Well, no, I would say, I think what Brad said was that, given now we've kind of decided this has two fronts, it's, they worked with the applicants on one front, but now they're going to pull it back because they realize there's actually two. And so the exact plan of what they're going to do, I don't think they've crafted that yet, but they would like another crack at it, and I think that's fine.
And I would tend, if I may, I would tend to agree. The one thing I would say is, I think we do need to confirm whether or not we're okay with the setback exceptions, just so that that's clear, that what we're mainly working on is that Palm frontage, and if, because we haven't discussed it. Personally, I'm fine with it, the way that it is. I think it's, it would be difficult to design it further unless they were to completely, like, build somewhere, in some other direction. But because it's a split-level home, I think that gives it a lot of restrictions.
Maybe they could indent part of it into some of the rooms, you know, kind of a-
But they do have some indentation right now on-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let's give them the chance to reevaluate it.
I mean, if they were to add a dormer into that whole elements, the design element, then it'll really change it up. You wish to make a comment?
Yes, please. The addition of the entry dormer would be a very viable solution. I'm not sure that I'd want to integrate upper-floor dormers. That doesn't, you know, right now, doesn't seem to be the right idea. However, the, I do concur with the entry element request, so that's definitely something. I don't, I don't think stepping the upper floor a foot or two is going to increase the, or decrease the massing, if you will. It's only going to hinder the room sizing. So that's my comment on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody's-
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has proposed to indent the entire front, fronting the Palm street yet.
Excuse me, are you referring to the entry element?
I'm referring to the second floor.
I missed your, that you-
I don't think anybody is proposing to indent the second floor.
Okay, yeah, I did, I thought somebody mentioned that.
I would suggest that, you know, typically on the front of the house, when there is more architectural features and details and more curb appeal on the front, typically in the back of the house, you know, you typically have it rectangular or square off, so there's not as much architectural features. So that kind of, from the side view, the west side view, we're looking on the street from Palm, is it, then we do see that very square-ish back end, and if there's, you know, a little bit of roofline play to make it break up, to not look more like an industrial back end of a building, you know, that might help also consider that, since we're redoing the entire roof line here, and then the eaves-
The entry porch.
Entry porch, break that up a little bit too, since we're taking away the chimney, so there's obviously going to be some play there. So those couple elements also might help it look more as a front of a house rather than the back end.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, just one more comment, if I may.
Ms. Joe?
And when, if, I guess, it seems like we're going toward a continuance, it would be nice to have a little better rendering in terms of just how it's going to look, because this is not representative of what the house looks like.
The color board, my-
And the color board to be a little more comprehensive?
A little improvement as well?
Please.
Need a little color?
A little color, more color in the color board, and then if you can do some of the landscaping, include that, just, because right now, it looks like a house, just in blue, floating in blue. So it would be nice to get a better visual for us, but-
Yeah, by all means, I think, you know, we can accommodate that, and that's not a problem.
Very well.
Thank you.
Any motion on the table?
I'd like to point out that it's not so far different also from the last, again, the last design. The staff worked a lot, you know, to make the other home, Chadborn Home, appealing on both sides, even though it was different, it was church, that duplex, you know, did a lot of architectural elements on each side facing the streets, so.
Great.
If we're continuing, do we need to set to a date certain? We do, so, I think we do.
Mr. Meisner, what do you, how much time do you think?
You know, I'd hesitate to do it to a date certain, we'll just go ahead and notice it again. I'm hopeful that we could have it back in January, but I just can't commit to the 6th at this point.
But if it's January, I think it might be best that we have it scheduled ahead, because otherwise you have another 14-day notice requirements.
Right, that's, I mean, that's what I'm suggesting, that we would just go ahead and renotice it.
Oh, well, that's pretty expensive to renotice.
I know. Well, okay.
We're talking about cost, also, why don't we do a date specific, and then if it has to be extended, at least we don't have to renotice it.
Yeah, then I would recommend January 20, that's Martin Luther King Day.
What?
I'm sorry, our second meeting in January falls on Martin Luther King holiday.
It always does.
So I'll have to-
Are we going to have a meeting that week? Sometimes we do.
Well, we could do a special meeting if the commission's open to that.
Well, no, not necessarily a special meeting, but sometimes we just have a meeting, change the meeting date.
Right.
Right, to 21st?
Commissioners, excuse me.
Yes.
Regarding the setback exception, was the conversation closed on that? What's the consensus, please?
I'm okay with the exception.
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
As long as there's these other mitigating factors thrown in, alternatives to offset that massing and everything lost from that loss of setback.
Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe it could be a little bit wider or something, I don't know. Just work on it.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, there's sufficient, I think there's sufficient breaking up between the first and second stories so that the setback doesn't look such prominent, right? So I think I'd be fine with the setback exception as it stands. Mr. Meisner?
Yeah, I mean, I might go ahead and recommend that we continue to the 21st of January, that would be the Tuesday if the commission is available, and then secondarily, we just need to ensure that we have a meeting space so we can take a look at all of that.
Okay. Well, let's set it for that Tuesday, and then if it has to be changed-
I think we should set it, exactly.
At least they won't have to be renoticed.
Correct.
Setting to a date certain, it's, I think it's important for the applicant so that we know this thing is moving forward.
Yeah, I'll motion to approve, I mean, I'll motion to continue this item to January 21st. I don't need to say anything more, right?
No, I think it's fine.
Thank you very much.
Second.
So we got a motion on the table from Ms. Commissioner Joe, it's second from Commissioner Davis. Your votes, please. Five to nothing, the item is now continued to January 21st. Thank you very much.
So this next item, I just, oh, excuse me, wanted to make a few opening remarks on this next item. So this is an information item for the planning commission this evening. As you are, may or may not be aware, the city's building and planning application fees have not been updated since the year 2013. So the city is very interested in ensuring that we are operating under a 100% cost recovery basis. So at the advent, or at the beginning of this process, we had Matrix Consulting work with our finance department to sit down and interview the planning staff as well as myself to talk about our processes, to talk about the time that it takes typically to get through projects. So we're looking to have this information item for you this evening. There's nothing that you need, there's no vote, no formal vote. We then take it to the city council at their first meeting in January for a public hearing. We have Courtney Ramos here with Matrix Consulting, and we also have Deanna Hillbrants, our finance director, so I think she's going to talk to you a little bit more in depth about the study. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Deanna Hillbrants, Finance Director. A little bit of an add to what Brad addressed for you. So this is an informational item. We, as part of the city council's fiscal sustainability initiative, we are looking at all opportunities to secure revenue for the city and long-term fiscal sustainability. The, this fee study was initiated through an RFP in 2018. We've spent a lot of time this year on the process. Brad mentioned the finance team and him and the whole team were interviewed in terms of how long things take. We did also what's called a cost allocation plan, allocating overhead costs such as attorney services, payroll services, human resources services, other financial services as part of this process. So it's a very extensive process. While the fees were updated in 2013, we looked back, I think, all the way into 2000 and did not identify when the fees were comprehensively studied in this way of actually looking at each item. So Courtney Ramos from Matrix will go into detail about what that process looked like, what the legal parameters are that we're working with. So fee studies are not set up to earn a profit, they are set up to establish that we are not charging more than the cost of services, that is the legal framework we're working within. So any of these fees are based on the cost of service, and again, a recommendation to have 100% cost recovery for the city. Again, no profit-making incentive. We also did some comparisons to neighboring jurisdictions. So again, as we've not studied these fees comprehensively, we've not raised them in a long time, we felt that was the best comparison process. There are not always great examples of comparing, other agencies might do different, especially, for example, on valuation-based fees, some may do them by script footage versus valuation or that type of thing. But in our comparison, we found that in some cases, our fees would end up lower than neighboring jurisdictions, and in some cases, they'll be a bit higher. But more often, they're either lower or within the average range. So with that, I'll bring Courtney Ramos up. She'll talk to you a little bit about what the process we went through and what the legal framework is that we're working within. I think one more quick add is by adopting a new fee schedule, just in planning and building, there's anticipated to be over a half million dollars in revenue that's not current, that's basically currently being subsidized. So it would reduce general fund costs and availability of funds for other programs. So with that, this is Courtney Ramos from Matrix Consulting.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Ramos from Matrix Consulting Group. Some of this presentation will be familiar to those of you who saw it a couple weeks ago as part of the city council presentation, although this is specific to planning and building as we go through this. So a little bit of what I wanted to do here this evening was give you a brief introduction, talk about what the overall goals or the scope of services were for the study, review the legal framework that surrounds cost of service or user fees, and then just provide a basic overview of the costing methodology and approach, and then finally give a summary of findings, at which point I will turn it over to Deanna, and they will be able to answer any specific questions about the particular fees. If there's a methodology question or a legal question, I'm more than happy to answer those questions. So a little bit about who I am, who Matrix Consulting Group is. We've been around for about 17 years, providing services to local government, cost of service, process analyses, management and staffing audits. We are located just down the road in San Mateo. I was the project manager for both the cost allocation plan and the user fee study. I was assisted by Kushbu Hussain and Jessica Mazenko, who were also our lead project analyst and our lead data analyst. We do have a lot of experience in working with other communities here in the Bay Area, including Milpitas, Santa Clara, Redwood City, working with the city of South San Francisco, so a lot of other jurisdictions in the area, which unofficially can kind of help us when we're doing comparisons, when we're looking at that kind of information and making sure that time estimate or processes seem to be comparable in the area. So really quickly, an overview of fee studies. So fees should be assessed according to the degree of individual or private benefit gained from those services. Generally speaking, you don't, a profit-making objective cannot exist. According to Prop 218 and 26, if you charge more than a service costs, it's a tax, and then it must be voted on by the public. So the goal of this study was really to kind of take a look at the processing and the staffing involved in what it takes to provide a service and see what is the full cost associated with that, essentially to give you a ceiling. And then to present that information to you so that you can kind of look at this continuum that we have up here as to where you think certain services should fall, whether they should be more subsidized or closer to cost recovery. So what a fee study does, like I said, is it provides a tool for understanding those current service levels. How many plan reviews, how many inspections are involved with a particular service? It looks at documenting all of those fee-related services and those service level assumptions. So what were the factors that we put in there? What were the costs that were associated with all of that? The benefits, obviously, of doing a study like this, it gives you a benchmark, it identifies where you are. As Deanna said, there have been updates to fees in the past, but there wasn't really a recent document that kind of said these were the assumptions that were made, this was kind of the process evolved with this, that, you know, what we said our service level was for what we were costing it out to be. Obviously, first and foremost, though, what this study does is it makes sure that you are in compliance with local laws and with state laws and regulations, to make sure that you are not charging more for the service than it costs you. And there are a lot of times where, depending on the change in processes, you want to do studies like this so that we make sure that if there are process efficiencies that have taken place, that we are then able to reduce the cost of that service, reduce that fee so that we are still in compliance with those laws and those regulations. The other thing that we can do with the study, and I think what we certainly did with planning and with building, is to look at the fee structure and to streamline that fee structure, make it easier for applicants to understand, make it easier for people at the counter to administer those fees and those permits. So I talked a little bit about the legal framework surrounding that, but essentially, a user fee, it may not exceed the estimated reasonable cost of providing the service for which the fee is charged. We have a lot of different regulations in California that essentially all say the same thing. Like I said, 218 and 26 are the most prominent, but we also have 13 and 4. So again, what we want to do is make sure that we're not charging more for the service. If you want to charge more for the service, it's a completely separate meeting and you have to get, you know, a majority of the public to vote on it, in which case then you can absolutely do that. But for us, the legal framework that we guided, that guided us through the study, were 218 and 26. So the approach that we took is a bottom-up approach in establishing what the cost of service is. And what that means is that we look at the staff who are actively working on a project, how much time is associated with that, and then what is the fully burdened cost associated with that hour. And what that does is it means that we aren't, we aren't looking at the total cost of a program or a department and trying to account for that over all fees and services. That would be more of a top-down approach. What we're looking to do is only account for the services and the costs associated with the action of the item that we're doing. And sometimes that means you can have a fee set at full cost recovery, and if nobody walks through the door and wants a permit, then you would not make any money, right? Because you wouldn't be charging for that service. Or if only one person walked through that door, they wouldn't have an astronomical fee because we aren't trying to recover for everything through that one permit or that one service. We looked at, working with staff, like I said, to update the fee structures, streamline it, make it easier to read, easier to understand, what are the permits that you might need, what- what are the costs associated with those permits, making sure that we were including potentially new services as well as breaking services apart. So, did we have one fee when really, based on our service levels, we needed to have multiple fees within a category so that we could better reflect the costs associated with that service for the various different things that we were doing. We calculated fully burdened hourly rates by position, and the fully burdened hourly rate is both the salary and benefits as well as any departmental or division or citywide overhead associated with that. We looked at gathering time estimates by position for each staff member, looking at each step in the process to understand what that time takes, collecting volume statistics to project workload and revenue impacts, and then ultimately analyzing the gaps between costs and revenue. So, with the updated fee schedules, like I said, what we wanted to do was make sure it was reflective of the current services that we were providing. We got rid of fees that were no longer relevant or that we didn't need or that could be incorporated into other fees or other categories, and we expanded other categories where it was warranted. When we talk about time estimates, what we wanted to do is break this down, you know, obviously, a lot of the things, particularly with planning and building that we're talking about, these are processes that can span months, sometimes even years. So, breaking it down at the process step level, so looking at intake and processing, who you might have to route it to, looking at that first initial review, how many re-reviews do we want, the number or type of inspections that we would need, re-inspections, looking at each step in that process to estimate time. Also, when we were looking at estimating time, what we didn't want to do was look at the easiest project that might fall in that category. We also didn't want to look at the most compact. What is the average amount of time, a reasonable average amount of time of taking a look at that? And like I said, we have worked with other jurisdictions in the area, so a pretty good idea, not only of, within the state or within the nation, of what time estimates should be, but also locally, kind of what do we see time estimates, rules within each jurisdiction that might make your process simpler or more complex than another. So, just making sure that we've. So, when we look at total cost, like I said, it's essentially three components. It's the direct salaries and benefits associated with that staff person or with that position, looking at departmental overhead, so looking at the services and supplies, the buildings, the lights, and then citywide overhead, so looking at the costs associated with finance or the city clerk or HR to support those employees. Kind of lets you know, this is what it costs, and you can't go above what that number is. So, a quick sample fee comparison here for permit issuance. We have for, and this is just a standard permit issuance for either plumbing, mechanical or electrical. The current fee is just under about $40. 100% cost recovery, if that's what you were going for, so the total cost to provide that service is just over, actually, $100. In comparison, if you look at it, you've got Burlingame, San Bruno and San Mateo, obviously a little bit higher than the current fee here in Millbrae, but still lower comparatively. And then Belmont, Hillsborough and Monte Serrano, a little bit higher in that comparison. For the negative declaration, just over $3,000. Again, you've got some of them that are below not only the average cost recovery, but also what Millbrae's current fee is, such as Belmont and Brisbane. But then you also have some that are higher, like Burlingame, Hillsborough, Hillsborough, San Mateo and Monte Serrano, which is about in line with Millbrae's total cost to provide the service. So, when we compare fee-related revenue with fee-related cost, overall, together, building and planning are recovering about 35%. There are 35% cost recovery with a deficit of about almost $850,000. It's pretty much spread evenly between building and planning, with building at about 48% cost recovery and planning at about 15% cost recovery. Typically, what we see for building is more in the 80% to 100% cost recovery range, and for planning is typically more in the 50% to 70% cost recovery range. And that's usually those cost recovery percentages, those kind of targets, something that we see kind of nationally, but definitely much higher usually for building than for planning. Just another way of looking at it, more fancy graphs. So, the goal of this study was to put together all of this information for you, to let you know what it's costing to provide those services. And obviously, one of the outcomes of this is to update your fee schedule. But another part to this is to establish cost recovery policies and goals, to take a look at where do you think, as a city, you should be for each one of these particular departments? Right now, in front of you is just building and planning, but where do we think those departments should be, and how long do we think it should take to get there? So, for example, while planning is maybe at 15% right now, maybe our ultimate goal is 50%. And then the question is, how quickly do we want to achieve that? And within that goal, if we had that goal of 50% cost recovery, there may be certain fees or certain permits which we still choose to subsidize. An example in building might be a water heater permit. While we might choose to have 80% or 100% cost recovery for building, what we really want to do is we want compliance. We want people to kind of come in and pull those permits. So, we make the decision to intentionally subsidize those at a lower level. So, to document those decisions and those policies, again, so that we have a baseline so that going forward, three, four, five, 10 years from now, we understand why we made the decisions that we made, in case we no longer need to have those decisions in place, in case we need to modify our cost recovery goals or our policy objectives. The other thing that we would recommend is establishing some sort of automatic increase factor. So, you know, you don't go through a study like this every year, usually every three to five years is kind of the best management practice, but establishing some sort of factor so that your fees can increase annually so that they can at least maintain the cost recovery levels you establish when these fees get adopted. So, if nothing else, kind of tying it to maybe a labor COLA increase or a CPI increase so that we can keep those fees maintaining the level of cost recovery that you establish. And with that, I'll hand it over back to Deanna, unless you guys have any questions.
I can.
If you have a quick one, might as well.
Is there, in terms of, because it seems like we're definitely under recovering, is there, is there a cap in terms of how quickly you can increase annual increase or anything? Is there any regulation based on that, I mean, that restricts that?
There's nothing that restricts how quickly you can get to 100% cost recovery.
Under that 100%?
Exactly.
Okay.
The community might have something to say about that, but legally, no.
Okay. And then when you're calculating out the costs, like there are some broken down into smaller pieces. If you have a bigger project that encompasses the smaller pieces, then it naturally ends up being less per item? Intuitively, it feels that way, but I'm just wondering if that. So, if I did, if somebody did a kitchen remodel or something, a full something remodel, and then, you know, taking into account all the different elements in it, it would cost probably less, in your calculations, it would cost, the cost would be less than if you were to itemize each item, or do you actually itemize each item in that?
So, within, the way this is, I think, being proposed is that there would, is a, is a specific line item for a bathroom or a kitchen remodel. So, instead of itemizing, there's just a singular permit to kind of fall in within that standard.
But then the cost, when you're calculating out the costs, it ends up being less, I would assume, than if you were to have broken it down, item item, by, would be, would it be, end up being less?
Not necessarily. I mean, if you mean item by item, like this is how many fixtures you did, and this is how many, you know, how much of the wall you got rid of or something like that. Generally speaking, I don't believe it would be that big of a difference between having a singular fee versus an itemized.
Okay, it would be pretty similar. Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
And then.
You have a question, right, Commissioner Wong? Quick one.
And then what's, what's the issue with not being able to use the top-down approach? Because it seems like if we have to nickel-and-dime every item for reimbursement of the costs, it doesn't seem a good business practice that, you know, wouldn't be, have staff that would be allowed to have retirement or vacation or cover their expenses or the heating bill and cost recovery. It doesn't seem reasonable to just keep nickel-and-diming every piece of inspection item like that.
I wouldn't say that the bottom-up approach is nickel-and-diming. I think the difference is, is that when you look at the bottom-up approach, you're only paying for the costs associated with the service that you're getting as opposed to, because your volume might fluctuate from year to year, right? So, the workload of staff is going to fluctuate from year to year. And so, it would be unfair to say that in a downturn economy, when you have less projects coming across your desk, that somehow it costs, then it costs you more to provide that service. So, if I just happen to be trying to do something in a down year, I'm going to pay potentially thousands of dollars more for a service than it would be if I was doing it in an up year when you've got higher utilization of your staff. The other thing, too, with kind of that top-down approach, is you would need to look at it more often because of those swings in, in volume and in workload.
But that's not excluded. I mean, that's not, there's cities or counties that would be able to use the top-down approach, right? Correct?
I think you could. I think you are more open to challenge by using the top-down approach, legally speaking, than you are if you use a bottom-up approach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick correction. I think I grabbed the wrong version, but we will be holding a public hearing on January 14th at the city council to recommend adoption of these fees, and they would be effective about 60 days later. We'll probably just pick the first Monday 60 days later to give us time to get those in the system. So, that, in terms of timeline, that's the only time restriction that we have that we're dealing with. And as the recommended fees that are included in your packet and were presented to you, they are recommending full cost recovery. One area that's a little bit different is for very large projects. We're using the, these estimates, for example, the valuation amounts. So, if, for example, we've got our large projects near the station, and they'll be paying for a building inspector as they are on-site versus for a certain number of inspections because it's unknown how many they'll need.
So, those are going to be charged on actual usage?
Correct. And that's typically going to be at the discretion of the director of community development to identify. We've got some of them identified in the fee schedule in terms of square footage or valuation, and then the director may identify that this project is outside of the scope of what was anticipated in the fee study.
Size-based.
Yeah. And then the other thing I'd like to add to, to what Deanna was saying, is a new category that was to the planning fee schedule is the same notion of larger, you know, in the course of project management, it's much more difficult to try to anticipate how many hours you may spend on a project that is sort of unknown. So, there, again, we've set a threshold, a recommended threshold of projects that are greater than 50 residential dwelling units or larger than 50,000 square feet, that in those instances, we would collect an initial deposit and then do time and materials from there.
So, for us, this is all informational information, and it will go as this report to the city council on the 14th?
With, yeah, with the fees recommended, yes.
With these fees?
Yes. Yeah.
But I mean, it's not like we're going to go through them and decide what's good or bad or anything like that.
You don't have to. If there's a fee there that catches your eye, or you got more questions, certainly talk about those. But, yeah, I mean, the intention this evening was to let you know, more importantly, to let everybody know that the city is trying to operate on a cost recovery basis. We haven't updated our fees in a number of years, and so this is a very comprehensive look across the board for not only planning and building, but also recreation fees as well.
Yeah, we did take at our last council meeting in November, or, yeah, first council meeting in November, we took the recreation fees, some public works fees, some finance fees and city clerk fees. There are some fees that are not at cost recovery due to state laws. So, there's a few in here related, I believe, to solar. Yes, mic's helping me out back there. And we have some similar fees, for example, with our city. So, we do, there are some times where we cannot recover, and that's just based on, basically unfunded mandates from the state. And so, but in general, we're focused on moving into that direction. I've also, just recently, we had a League of Cities meeting, and I spoke to a couple of my colleagues in the county, and they are also looking at updating. So, even though we're within the average, those are likely to increase as well.
Those fees that are being proposed, some are the smaller increases, the three, four times what they used to be, some larger ones, like, you know, air conditioning, over 10 tons, it's like 20-some times what the fee used to be.
I know.
I think in some of those cases, they're uncommon, and so while the increase seems very high, they're not impacting, or they might not have even been used recently. So, yeah, so they, you will see some increases that seem pretty large, but they're in uncommonly used fees that need to pay that often. And sometimes also, a small fee might look like it's increasing tremendously, but it's so small to start with that, you know, it could.
Percentage-wise.
Yeah, percentage-wise, it looks, it looks like a huge increase.
May I?
Yes. Yes, you may.
Okay, I'm a little confused because you all both started with, we're going for 100% recovery, but then we were presented with building and planning being 80 to 100 and whatever to 50% or whatever. So, how do we do that? That's not really the goal of 100%? If we can't.
So, we're, we are recommending 100% cost recovery. 80 to 100 is an average in the industry. You know, when you start at 100% cost recovery, you are making assumptions that it takes X amount of time to do this thing and X amount of time to do that. So, our aim is 100% cost recovery using, so when Matrix does their report, they aren't recommending the fees. They're saying, this is what it costs, and then it's for us to go in and say, do we want to be 100%? Do we want to be 80? Do we want to be 50? So, these were just to show you kind of what the industry is doing, and Matrix does studies across the country. So, there may be other organizations, Courtney could probably speak to some of that as well, that haven't done a fee study in even longer than we haven't done a fee study. So, they're on the low, they could be on the low end like us. So, we want to be 100% cost recovery, except where the state is not letting us be. We, at least that's the recommendation of staff, that we'll, we want to get to 100% cost recovery. But I think one other thing I wanted to add is that we did meet with the finance subcommittee of our city council, who also addressed that that was an interest as well. And they, but they did want to have us, you know, present this to you in advance as well.
I mean, it is true that we're a small jurisdiction. I mean, you know, having the general fund to subsidize all these fees would be difficult, and we have a very small tax base. So, you know, running at 100% cost recovery, I think it's important, and I think it is the right thing to do.
Yeah. And then if I could just comment on Commissioner Davis's comment. So, what you do have before you is, through the study, the 100% cost, the fee, the new fees are set at 100% cost recovery. Yeah.
All right. So, let's see, I think I have several more questions. Okay, we're way behind, and I know we can decide how fast we want to catch up. And then we're going to throw in annual increases as well, just to keep it at whatever we, okay. So, just asking like from other jurisdictions or whatever, are there rushes to the planning counter to beat the fees? When do they go into effect? You know, it's like if I did it on the 30th of this month or the 1st of the next month, it might fees, how much did they jump? Is it, does it change how work comes through? Do people argue, especially if we're trying to catch up? Because like, I'm just looking at the one that maybe we care the most about, single family additions and planning commission review, the increase is going to be seven times increase. And I just went, whoa.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page 26. And that's not the only permit that they're pulling, right? So, there's a lot of other fees, and we're, and part of, there's another section, what's on the last page that says, or isn't it, where we try to incentivize good behavior, and so many people are reluctant to pull permits, but I think because they cost so much? I'm just curious how that all is going to play together, if not just this fee, but every fee for plumbing and electrical or whatever else is also going up? You know, are we going to have more bad behavior? I don't know. Just asking.
And those are fantastic questions. So, what I would say is I've been through these types of fee studies several times, and yes, because the fees are set by resolution and they're adopted at a public hearing, they cannot become effective for 60 days after the adoption. So, you will come in and file under today's fees, right? Now, the good news is, we still have our criteria for what is a valid submittal. So, it's not just back-of-the-napkin sort of submissions, but if a project has been conceived and they're at that place where they're able to submit, then that is, that's the harsh reality. Yes, they'd be able to apply and pay the fees that are in effect today. So, there will be a process, and we will do. So there will be a process, and we will do our educational outreach and let the public know what day that's going to occur, just like with any kind of ordinance change, too. I've seen that happen in the past where you'll see a run on application types, those types of things. In a couple of months' time, we'll have the new fees in place.
I think you might find a little bit of a rush, but then it'll smooth itself out over time, and we'll get to the goal. And, you know, alternately, you just keep waiting, and you're never achieving that recovery that you-
I guess I'm seeing it if we are playing catch-up over three or five years, that it could be happening every year, right? Every time you're crossing a new date, whatever that date is. Would there be a new rush every year as those fees are jumping up?
Also, you know, speaking of that, you know, do we have some automatically increased, you know, mechanism built in, like CPI every year?
So with our other fees, our council requested a CPI increase. We'll be suggesting either CPI or a CCI, Construction Index, increase that we'll build in, build into the resolution, and the increase would typically be set to occur with the budget. So, for example, we'd be taking it in May or in April to be adopted for July 1st.
Yeah, I mean, I do see, you know, some of the biggest deficit area would be the planning commission review on single-family home additions. I mean, $128,000. It's a pretty sizable deficit for the city. You know, having a general fund to subsidize that would be an issue, right? So I think we really need to play catch-up here, right? Because I myself contributed quite a bit of that.
I'm thinking also that, going beyond that, that, you know, again, there are a lot more costs involved with running the planning department and inspections and doing general plans and master planning-
Can imagine, right?
And so forth. So if at all, we can do cost recovery for that portion, and also, isn't there's a big disparity between some of the lower-end projects, you know, the percentage of costs, like for some of these projects for building commercial multifamily permit fees at $10,1600, which is 16% of the $10,000 versus on the higher end, project valuation, $10 million to $25 million. First $10 million charges $30,000, which is only 0.3%. So you're charging a lot higher percentage for the smaller projects, and it doesn't seem right to me that if we're running deficits or trying to manage the city, that we'd be getting away with not having higher fees for those higher evaluations or not truly recovering costs involved in running the entire department, construction, inspection, planning. Just wanting to make sure that our city doesn't go bankrupt or lose any more money than it has to.
Yeah, another thing to keep in mind is that in some of the other jurisdictions that I'm aware of, they would bill separately for extra inspections, for example. If certain things were to fail inspections, then if they want to get additional inspections, they have to pay for that, right? Same thing for plan checks. If they had to go through, let's say, you know, maybe one or two plan checks reviews, and if they were to make major changes after that, because they're not in compliance, or they're just, you know, the plans were just substandard, then extra fee got built into that, so that, you know, the staff times are being recovered accordingly.
And so, and those concepts are in this new fee study where, you know, whether it's plan check or under a building permit, in a plan check process, there's an assumption that there may be, you know, one to two, three rounds of plan check that's part of the actual fee. Above and beyond that, we start to charge hourly rates. Same thing for inspections, right? We do have a re-inspection fee. If you've not gotten through in the first or second time for that and passed, we're going to start to charge for more time.
Correct. Because otherwise, you know, we don't want to penalize everybody else for, you know, a few who are not as, what's the white word? Not being up and up on their things, right?
Is that information explained to applicants as they come in?
So what will go hand-in-hand with the new fee study is then, when we put our policies out there, we're going to have much more explanations and enough as part of the process.
On lieu of redoing all the numbers and unit costs and everything, I don't know if there's a way to add a multiplier. I mean, as a consultant, you must be fully aware that we do multipliers when we do costs and accounting for charges to clients. So if there's at all possible to do multipliers on the, especially like on these higher-end projects that seem to pay only 0.3% versus, you know, the small projects only that pay, have to pay a much higher 16% of their costs. I don't know if there's a way to do that to get more cost recovery.
Technically, so I think what you're, because you're talking about like the valuation-based, and you're basing the percentage of the fee on the value of the project. Is that how you're coming up with those?
Right, just based on your tables here.
Yeah, okay. So I think the problem with that, again, is that you cannot legally charge more for the service than it costs you to provide the service. So, and typically, what had been done previously, which is no longer allowed, is that the valuation structure was set up at one point in time to, where the small-dollar projects were subsidized by the higher-dollar projects. And so, while, and generally speaking, the smaller-dollar projects actually take more time than the higher-dollar projects. So you would actually see that it would be a lower percentage of your costs when you're looking at that, just based on who typically is coming in and bringing those projects in. But if, in order to comply, what we need to do is look at what it is. We can't add on a factor because your project is, you know, above 10 or 20 million, and we know you can afford it. Legally, you're not allowed to kind of put on, as a private contractor, as a private consultant, I can do that all I want. Anybody else can do that all they want. But as a government agency, you are not allowed to do that.
I do have one question about ADUs. So those are considered single-family addition? Is that what category they would fall under? So, and then if it's under staff review, then we're looking at the cost going to $77,000? And that almost seems like you would end up discouraging, discouraging people from putting in ADU, because ADU planning-
Which page are you in?
26.
ADU planning?
I mean, 20, there's no ADU on there. It's 26, and so I said, ADUs are considered single-family additions, and they confirmed that it is. So then, single-family additions, it goes under staff review because it's ministerial, so that takes it to $77,000. And, I mean, I've seen people do ADUs for $77,000, you know, not much more than that. So you're talking about almost doubling the cost. And I'm just wondering if that is one area, you know, we're trying to encourage people to do, but by having 100% recovery, $77,000 feels like a lot to begin-
That's the total. So-
Okay.
That's the annual number. That's not a per year.
Okay, okay. Good. Thank you.
I found where you were looking at.
I'm sorry, so I was like, what?
That's annual, that's not, that's not per year.
That's just me, sorry.
So that means like 17 applications?
So it would be 48, 79. Got it.
So just, let's just talk about that real quick, so I can just clarify. So ADU represents something much different than sort of the standard protocol, right? Because under the state law, we're not allowed to do a discretionary reviewed application. So that even includes staff-level review. So in a scenario like that, what we've been asking for accessory dwelling units is to ensure that they're meeting our zoning rules and regulations. So that's a zoning review. That's a very simple sort of staff-level application that's based on a couple of hours of time to ensure setbacks and size and that type of thing. That's the extent of the review that would be involved there. So it wouldn't even be the $6,000.
It wouldn't be any fee, or?
No, there are fees. So there would be a zoning review fee upfront to ensure the zoning is compliant, and then there would be the standard building permit fees, right? And then as we develop the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, there will be a question about whether or not we can collect a sort of, any sort of residential impact fees. So we need to answer that question as we formulate the new ADU ordinance.
Okay, so there is no planning fee associated with an ADU, then?
It would be a zoning review fee. So it's a planning review fee, but not a design review fee.
Okay, how, where does it go on this schedule? Does it not go on this schedule, or does it go on-
It is on the schedule. So if you look down on, under the planning fees, so on the second page, you'll see miscellaneous review and action, okay? So you'll see zoning clearance, which is essentially $57. It's quite nominal.
Sorry, which page?
So on page-
Page 25.
On this little packet, the planning, green one.
Page two, the little page.
The smaller packet that only has green.
On the attachment.
Right?
Yeah, so-
Second page?
Yep. Under miscellaneous review and action, towards the bottom of the page.
Got it.
You see zoning clearance.
Yes.
Currently, we charge $29. We are proposing $57.
That's the applications fee for ADU?
Just for the zoning review. That's all, and that's all that we're legally allowed to do.
I know we're not doing action, but just as a suggestion, can that be made more clear? The AD, because somebody coming in, you know, you're publishing a schedule-
Have a separate category to spell it out.
Yeah, to spell it out, because if I'm looking at, I'm going, okay, it's an addition? What is it? And so if it's an ADU, you're actually paying 57, as opposed to if it's an addition, you're paying 4,000, $48, 79,000.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that comment very much. So back to what I was saying before, I think, once the fee schedule is adopted, then when we put it into our customer service form, we need to have a number of, you know, policies and explanations, so that's a great one to add.
Right, ADU for sure, because I think we want to make sure that people don't look at it and just get turned off before even opening, before starting it up, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Joe.
I had another question. I think it's on that green, green sheet, just a quick one. The conditional use permit, so it's been zero all this time? No. Okay. I'm seeing it zero on that first page, and I'm like, that, some of those took a lot of time.
Right, no, so why that's, why it's being shown that way is the introduction of the idea of a minor and a major CUP, right? So we're trying to get to a threshold question. So this is recommending a minor fee versus a major fee, and so we'll clarify what constitutes minor and major, yeah.
Okay, but there was a conditional use permit fee before, I mean, there currently is a conditional use permit fee, just a set one, regardless of minor or major?
Yes, yes. I think it was called, you know, use permit fee.
Okay, as a suggestion, you might want to put that number for both the minor and the major, and then that way, people can compare it to what, because it looks like we weren't charging anything, and then now we're charging whatever it is. Whereas it sounds like before, there was a set charge for both, regardless of whether it's minor or major conditional use permit. Or is it somewhere else?
Yeah, so it was on the second page. So discretionary use permit PC. So it falls under, and this is, this is good, I'm glad we need to clarify this, under antenna wireless communication. So I think it was under commercial discretionary use permit. That's what it would have been, that's, a discretionary use permit would have been akin to a conditional use permit.
Where are you, where's the discretionary use permit?
On page two.
Page two, page?
On the attachment.
That one is for antenna wireless communication.
I know. What I'm suggesting is that, in practice, any discretionary use permit, that would have been the same thing.
That would have been the cost?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
So we'll clarify that.
Yeah, because, I mean, then, actually, our conditional use permit, like I said, I almost feel like it would have been, minor, major is the same as this discretionary use permit cost?
If I may. Page one, line from the bottom, height setback, floor area assigned, what does that refer to?
Those are exceptions, exception requests.
Exception request to any single-family home design application?
It could be any, it could be any sort of development application that is seeking some relief from the property development standards.
So, for example, if, for today's application, there are two of them, that seeks setback exceptions, for example.
Right.
Would that fall into this category?
Right, so it would. So here's how this would now work, okay?
Yeah.
So, and there's a note that indicates it. Whenever you're applying for multiple applications, the practice will be that we will seek the highest of those applications.
Right.
For every subsequent application that's filed, we'll collect 25% of the value of the application. That's a fairly standard practice that many municipalities have in place. So as opposed to making them pay full value for each application-
Right.
They're getting a discounted rate on other applications that go coterminous or alongside with the main application, because we're doing all the same analysis at the same time.
Okay. So, just so we're clear, I mean, I'm reading this, it's, the fee is going up from $1,267 to almost $16,000.
That's correct.
And that, for example, if the application on 400 Chatborne or 400 Palm today, if they were to ask for a separate exception, it's going to cost them 16 grand.
That's correct. So that represents about 70, 70 hours of staff time.
Plus 25% of the design review?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then going to planning commission review, which is another six grand, 6821?
No, that would be covered as part of the exception requests and the design review.
So either they pay the 16 grand for the exception and go into planning commission. I guess what I'm trying to say is the fee is not addition to the planning commission review, which requires 6,800 now instead of 984.
The, so, yeah, so again, in practice, you take the larger of the two fees, you apply that, and then 25% of the subsequent applications. So, you know, what, right?
What do you mean by subsequent application? I guess I'm trying-
Not subsequent, the applications that would be filed, that are required to be filed at the same time, right? So tonight, we had a design review application and an exception request, those are two separate applications.
Right.
So in practice, we would have taken the exception.
15,915 plus 25% off on the 6821.
That's right. Yes.
25% of?
Off.
Of.
25, only 25% of it.
A quarter of it.
Yeah.
I thought it was 25% off.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we threw in a conditional use permit on that building?
That's correct. Maybe 25% of that fee.
Got it.
So, now, the other thing, too, is like, I think we started out with, there are certain types of applications that we don't find to be overly typical, right? So exceptions are something that are, that raise to a very high level. We need to have very, you know, good evidence as to why we're going to approve an exception. So this is another way that you can consider how you design your application, your project.
Okay. Appeal planning commission decision to City Council goes up from 500 to 4,500 bucks.
That's not a bad thing, though, because some people-
I thought that's low.
Oh, the 45?
Yeah.
And on that topic alone, I've seen, I've seen several cities that will deeply subsidize that just to allow for that due process to occur. So that's, it's just differing, you know, positions on that.
What is appeal to planning commission? I don't think I've ever seen one.
Oh, staff decision, appeals to planning commission?
I don't think I've-
Perfect example, to Tenvalaho.
No, that's not a, that's a-
That's a planning commission to the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, yes.
I don't think I've ever seen one appeal to the planning commission.
So we could have a staff-level review, a design review?
Like the 500 square feet approval on the story, appeals to PC.
Okay, got it. I've never seen it, though.
But who brings it?
What happened before?
It did?
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Who appeals that?
The applicant.
So it could be, it could be a neighbor. Could be, I mean, anybody's able.
Oh. And you bring up a good point a little earlier. Some jurisdictions deeply subsidize some of those appeal process so that to allow these due process to happen. Do we have those mechanisms for people who can demonstrate that they are unable to pay those fees, and then there's sufficient evidence that there's a need for that?
So at this point, that's not been requested by council. They could do something, it's within their, you know, authority to do that. That's not been a request they've made at this time. made at this time. So as we take these fees back, that may be something that will come back from them, and, or, we could put these fees in place and then find out later, it's not working. We do have a process, not in planning, but for example, in recreation, where organizations can request fee waivers, so certainly, there can be a process where they go to council to request a fee waiver, and then it goes back, yeah. So, so there is not today a proposed mechanism for that. I mean, there's all, you know, and, even in the example of, for example, a homeowner living in their home making improvements, they're gaining the value from that improvement, so there's still a subsidy if, if others, you know, if, if the fees are being reduced.
I mean, so there's a little different angle to that, because you're, they're benefiting from the subsequent approval of it, and the property value goes up, so, you know, paying those fees is justified, whereas if a neighbor were to try to fight something, then if they're in, being in a difficult economic situation, then they sort of de facto lose that option to fight it because of the high fee that are involved, right? So if they have to demonstrate that they are having economical hardship, there may be a genuine reason for offering a fee waiver or a fee reduction.
I don't see a need to charge that much money for a planning commission review, I mean, people, you know, have different sized lots and different special circumstances, and it seems like it would fall just in the same case of, you know, even general planning, it's the general plan in our city codes that require these conditions and, and design codes, and if they purchase a house that doesn't meet it already, then they're, they're stuck, and it should be a burden on the entire city and everyone, not just for individual homeowner. I mean, I don't think that, that fee is reasonable to charge for a single homeowner.
I'm sorry, which one?
The planning commission fee, the 16,000.
Oh, that's the, that's for the exceptions.
Right.
Set, floor ratio exceptions, and heights and setback exceptions.
Yeah, plus I can say that, because I'm working for free here, too.
So, as a statistical, as a statistical analysis, you know, from last year, last few years, you know, between the planning department and the building department, how much deficit are we running on a yearly basis?
They're probably total, they've had a cup, they had a pretty good year, for example, last year, and they were probably about 40% subsidized, and I'm doing that from memory, I don't have the numbers in front of me, meaning 60% recovery.
Do you have a dollar figure?
I'm sorry?
A dollar figure.
From memory.
What is it costing us?
From memory, I believe the department costs about $2 million, and recovers about one.
So the general fund is contributing a million dollar a year to the planning and building department on the fees?
Yeah, so it's not being collected, so it's, it's a general fund subsidy overall, yeah.
Right, but again, that's, you know, that's for, I think, somebody was saying, you know, not, not include, above and beyond this work here that we do here, we have many other things that are for the betterment of the city, that do come from the general fund, but, so.
I understand, that's what I'm trying to say.
For example, there's an economic development staff, there's housing staff, so I'm, I'm working from memory, maybe I'll make sure I have that question when I get to council, but, working from memory overall, code enforcement's another example of something that's not, there's not fee, I mean, ultimately, they'll be recovering some fines.
Don't we charge co-enforcement on things that we found?
Sure, we do, so when there's a violation, we can, you know, collect fees and penalties, but.
On enforcement?
By and large, as a, as a personnel cost, that is subsidized from the general fund.
Understand. Remind me again, what's the annual budget for the city?
City's general fund budget is about $30 million.
30 million, and we're in deficit a million dollar on this?
Yeah, so we balance the general fund budget, but by recovering more fees, we have that difference available for other city needs, streets, public safety, recreation parks.
So this represents about 3%?
Uh, yeah.
Better get it done.
You know, there's some, there's also some timing issues, for example, money comes in for a fee, and then the work doesn't happen for a few months later, so you have some timing in terms of budget issues, so. But their recovery's, I mean, last year, their recovery was way higher, they had some big projects come in, so we're, it's definitely building and planning is definitely a challenging one to, to monitor, as you're, you know, you just don't know what the economy and what people are coming in with, so we, we monitor it very closely. We did have to increase their budget, both from a revenue and an expense perspective, last year, they, they were bringing in revenue, big projects were coming in, and then you have some associated expenses, for example, where things are contracted out.
Right, so, just for TOD 1 and 2, I'm sorry, so go on a tangent here a little bit, but how, how are we in terms of cost recovery on those efforts?
Those are actually done as a deposit account, and so they're not subsidized, they're, they're charged, the contracts are charged directly back out to them.
So the city is not contributing general fund to getting those things approved?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The one that is for fence exception, it's currently 800, and it's going to drop to 227.
Yeah, that's just an application that we, we see few and far between.
So fence goes over six feet?
So it has dropped that much?
I don't think we have too many of those.
It's just that, I, I have not seen one application yet in my short tenure, but yes, it's not a very common application for us.
One thing that sort of catches my eye a little bit, if I may, Mr. Reisner, between a setback height, floor ratio exception, which has a 12, 13 times increase of variance, it's just less than 10%.
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, I think it's, it's sort of interesting, because the, the criteria for variance is, is scripted out in state law, so it's very particular, you have the findings you need to make, that's not to say that we don't have the local findings for exceptions, we do, but oftentimes, they just come alongside of a design application, so there's this little more nuance to be, to be looked at, frankly, so that's why there's an increase in the fee there.
Do you have a guesstimate, you know, let's say, a brand new, single-family home application on 3,000, on a 6,000 square foot lot, 3,000 square foot house to be proposed and built, that will have to go through planning commission review, what is the old cost? What is the new cost?
Are you talking total?
Yes.
With building permit fees included?
Estimated.
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't have that worked out, but I can certainly get that figure for you.
I mean, I think it would be an interesting data to see if that would deter people from doing it going forward, and, I mean, we, obviously, you know, I'm in agreement that we need to be in cost recovery 100%, right? But we just need to be conscious about, you know, some of these new fee that has to go in, whether or not it would deter development, I don't think it would. I mean, I've never been into a jurisdiction where I would do a project because it's cost prohibitive, unless there is a very long approval process that sort of drags you out, and, and makes your carrying costs much greater than anticipated, and that, you know, sort of killed the project.
I mean, you know, my, my response to that is looking at sort of the economic realities of where we are here in this location, California.
Understand, yes.
And a 6,000 square foot, brand-new home, while it's for a family, is also akin to a real estate development app.
Right, that's like a $3 million house to begin with.
So, you know, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to belittle this, these are significant fees, they, they are, but, but they are part of the soft costs involved in.
You're trying to do cost recovery, staff is expensive.
Yes.
Housing is expensive, I mean, PG&E is expensive, it's there.
It, that would just, would be a nice data point to have, though, average total costs for a remodel, and if you want to break that up into a medium and a big or something, but, it would just be a nice to see what they're going to go from to.
Yeah, we do have to look at any kind of unintended consequences that it might discourage people from pulling an actual permit and doing it legitimately, or, or trying to skirt somehow, because if we charge too much, then we, you may find that revenues may actually drop in some areas.
Two?
And, and by collecting more fees, we may be able to fund something like that if it becomes necessary, so it's, you know, it's quality of life things that, that we could start to fund by, by bringing these fees into, into that cost recovery.
I mean, yeah, I mean, in terms of running a jurisdiction, I don't think we should be in a situation where we're constantly subsidizing these permit applications, I mean, we have to be able to cost recover these things, generally speaking, right? Otherwise, you know, we're putting all of our taxpayers in a disadvantaged position for the few who wanted to put in applications for the remodels and, and development, right? So I think that's an important effort, and I think we should have gotten this sooner rather than later.
That's all very valuable input, and I'll make sure I have some of that clarity for when we go to council, and I'll also loop back with you on the single-family sort of scenarios.
We appreciate your support, and, and really, the team was fantastic, this was a complex, complex one to look at, and they really evaluated, one of the examples I'd like to raise, for example, we used to count, I think, outlets, and now we're doing more of a, of a square footage basis, so, you know, it's spending administrative time to figure out what the fee is, and we don't need to do that, so, really looked at how to be efficient at the same time.
Great.
They did a great job.
Good work.
Thank you.
Good work, thank you.
Yes, thank you for staying late to.
Is that it for this item? For 8A? Do we conclude this? Okay. I assume no public comment for that item, we don't have much public here left to comment on it. 8B, well planned for the planning commission, we got about 37 minutes left.
Yeah, well, okay, I can, I can go fairly quick here, I don't have the PowerPoint presentation prepared, but at first, I'd like to just start off by thanking the commission. Really, I think the relationship that we've been able to build over the last year has been very meaningful, we've heard a lot of valuable feedback from the commission, you've tackled a lot of media issues, right? We've gotten through the design review permits on both TOD 1 and 2, we talked about the Moxie Hotel, we had, we, we had the accessory dwelling unit conversation, and we had countless, just, well, not countless, because I could count them, but we've had several items before you, you know, we've met, including tonight, we've met 17 times, I think that's something to be proud of, I think, in a standard year, you probably would only meet, probably 20 to maybe 22, so we're not too far off of, of that mark. But with that said, there's still much work to be done, and I know that, I've heard from each of you this year about the types of things that we'd like to accomplish. In the report, as you'll know, I, I sort of put down bullet points of the things that I think I've heard pretty loud and clear over the last year, and they include, you know, getting back to having policy discussions about the general plan and the specific plan along El Camino Real and downtown, getting that accessory dwelling unit finalized, we were at a place where we are starting to talk about the telecommunications ordinance, and that sort of slowed down a little bit, but we do have a draft of that ordinance from legal, so we need to get back to commission to speak to you about it, as well as some community outreach. One of the things that's really clear is this, as, as our, as our team is building, as, as we're kind of all working together very carefully to continue to improve the quality of our staff reports, the level of analysis, so I very much have a keen eye towards making sure that staff reports are accurate, that the data is there, that the public has an expectation of what it is that they need to file, to try to streamline that process along, so staff's doing a good job, I think, of getting through projects a little bit quicker, but there's much work to be done, and we recognize that. We have talked about the need for transparency in terms of getting a website up, and, up, up to speed, where applicants can log in and find out, you know, what the status of their project are. I can tell you, as of today, it's a baby step, but nonetheless, it's a step. If you look at our website now, you'll find the list of residential development projects, and you'll find that there is some status columns that have been added to indicate whether or not a project has been deemed complete or not, to indicate whether or not we're prepared for planning commission, so it's a little bit more data that's there that will give some more information to the public. And then going hand-in-hand with that is then trying to automate the department a little bit more, right? So we have been talking about our permit tracking systems, and a way to be able to turn on the switches, if you will, to put the data from our, our permit system out to the public. So that's a work effort that's ongoing. I recognize fully that the commission does a very nice job of conducting study sessions, especially as it relates to policy matters, so bringing more policy matters to you, and, and helping fill some of those times where maybe some of the public hearing items aren't quite ready, but to have more meaningful conversations about land use issues and circulation issues throughout the city. And then last but not least, is in making sure that you all have the support that you need in the form of training, and making sure that you have opportunities to attend, you know, whether it's the league or through the American Planning Association. So those are the types of topics I heard, you know, being mindful of that, I certainly want to have your input. I, in your folder, I kind of listed out those work items, and there's room for more. So I don't know how much more, but there's definitely room for more.
Careful with that strategy there.
Yeah, exactly. The four slots is not subliminal. But nonetheless, on the, on the second page of the memo, I just wanted to make you aware, you know, there's many other things that we do on a day-to-day basis that transcends just what we do for the planning commission, and I'm really proud of our staff right now, with the, with the addition of Roscoe, and Bernadette, and Nestor, I think we're really forming a very nice planning division that can be very responsive to the citizens and the, and the residents of Millbrae, and, you know, we're just going to keep working at it, so we have a number of things that we do on a day-to-day basis, I listed on the back. So with that said, I'm going to get offstage, let you have a conversation and, and discussion, and let us know, are there, is there something I'm missing, are there other things that you really would like to see, and then we can go about figuring out how to balance all of that and put some timelines behind this stuff.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Personally, I mean, when I look at this list, I, I think it's a great list to begin with. Obviously, the list will grow from here, I mean, having four slots there is probably not going to be sufficient, but understanding everything had to be done in a priority, right? So as far as I'm concerned, I think the most important thing for the city going forward is, is figuring out a way how to revitalize our downtown, and I think that's first and foremost, the most important thing, because that's, that directly speaks to our, our tax base, it directly speaks to our image, and, you know, when I have conversation with other council members and other cities and other planning commissioners, I see a lot of room for improvement to our downtown, and how it would be able to benefit our city as a whole, if we were to try to get these things instituted and encourage development. And so, you know, without going to the specifics, is what I'd like to see, but I'd like to see a plan together, you know, between now until the middle of next year, I'd like to have some solid plan done, to really figure out what we can do with our downtown. You know, we have too many empty storefronts, we have, you know, we have storefronts that's been empty for a long time, and, and, you know, single-story buildings that are underutilized. Obviously, we can put some density into this and try to make use of it, you know, we can broaden up our sidewalk, and, and really make it more pedestrian-friendly, so that we could, you know, we can breathe some new life into it. I don't know how the commission would feel about it, but I thought that's high on my list.
Well, he's got it on the list right there, number one and two, general plan and downtown.
If I can put him on the top, if I can put him on the table, I would.
I would agree with that, and then, the one thing I think, because we, we talked about design review, I, I think having clear design review guidelines, and I know we worked on that worksheet, but honestly, the plans that came today were all over the place, and I know it's not, I, I think they need, the applicants need to be really clear, especially if we're going to talk about efficiency and cost and all of that, that, you know, we, like, we should not have to ask for, it should be very clear in terms of what they need, so just having a way to have, make sure our design review guidelines are very clear, our application process is very clear, to streamline that, for applicants too, because they're paying a lot of money, spending a lot of time coming out here, and then to have to turn them back and say, this wasn't enough, it, it feels like that shouldn't be the, you know, that shouldn't have happened from the beginning, so, yeah, that's something that I really like to see.
The chart was, neither one of those charts were.
Your mic is off, but, yeah, the charts, the landscaping, and we did ask for the landscaping on there, you know, the elevations, having the adjacent, outline of the adjacent home, all of that was in there, but I'm not sure if, if it has, just needs to be, if it's not finalized yet, maybe that's what the issue is, but, anyway, I, I just feel like we, there could be some efficiency going on, or something more clear for people.
I would really like to see the ADUs completed as quickly as possible, because they're happening, and we'd like, I, I think we should have some say, and we were supposed to have something by the end of the year, when we did those plans and that lady was here, I can't remember what her name was, but they did us, and then they did something to the council, and they did the work, you know, at, at the library and stuff, and I'm really a little disappointed that we haven't received anything.
Yeah, let me touch on that real quick. So we, we had the study session with the planning commission, we did the outreach with the public, then we went to council, and council did give direction to staff to go prepare that ordinance. In that moment, from the time we went to planning commission to the council, the state completely revamped all of the regulations that go into effect January 1, so we had to take a step back to reanalyze what we are able to have in the form of the ordinance, and it's, it's getting very difficult, I'll, I'll be very.
I did hear about that new revamping from the state.
Right, so, really, they are, I mean, they're effectively cutting the cities off of the knees on what it is that we're able to regulate, so. So with that said, though, I do recognize that we need to get an ordinance on the books, and we are going to move very quickly on that. And then we're going to have to look and see how far we can take it, because I think there are some neighborhood concerns about traffic and capacity for water and those types of things that are very real issues for the city of Millbrae and safety. And so the state kind of doesn't give the best guidance on what to do with those issues. So we are sorting through that. But I do hear you loud and clear.
Are we still have the same lady that spoke with us working on it?
Yes, we have our, yeah, so we have our planning staff, and we have Elisa Tierney, our housing and economic.
That's it, housing and economic. It's the same person?
Yes, she's a staff person, right, yes.
Good. I mean, so often, we get somebody, and then they leave, and then everybody's starting all over again. I'm glad to hear she's still here.
Very well. Anything else?
No, I mean, I really feel that they're all very important. And as you say, you also have your normal work to do. So there has been some slowdown on the telecommunications because about what's happening on the outside. So it's given us a little bit more time. Jean touched on the accuracy of the reports. I think that's really important. Well, conduct study sessions to discuss other land use policy matters. I think that's important, but probably not my top priority. Revitalizing downtown is always a great idea. I'd really love to see it happening. I've been talking about the downtown for.
Ever?
Even before I got on Planning Commission.
That's really forever.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I've got a downtown plan this thick from 1995.
That speaks to the importance of it.
That's the importance of it. We had consultants, and they came up with this wonderful plan, and here we are.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, you know, that takes a lot of conviction and a lot of time, you know, putting into it, and even takes some political wrangling in order to get that done. And I understand how difficult it could be. But I think, you know, for the sake of our city, I think this is one thing that we really need to tackle and not to delay any further, you know.
I'd like, oops.
Yeah, look at Burlingame, look at South San Francisco, look at all the other cities, you know, and look at us, right? So I, you know, I hate to say this on public record, but, you know, we've got to, you know, I mean, we're playing catch-up here, and, you know, we better get it done sooner rather than later.
I'd like to see more code enforcement on signage. I mean, to me, signage is cluttery, and it detracts from a downtown. I mean, I've been to cities where the signage is minimal, and it is much better. I mean, you see things now, it's so cluttered, you don't see anything back. We need people.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
This is the Planning Commission's work program, not a wish list of things for Millbrae to do in general. But worrying about code enforcement and signage is important, but it's not our work program.
Excuse me, it's part of revitalization.
But no, but our work program. We don't revitalize the downtown, we advise the council. I mean, we're not elected. We don't direct staff to do much of anything because we're not their boss. So this is the stuff that, you know, these are important things, and the really important things are already at the top of this list. I'm just saying, I think we're sort of creeping out a little too far is all. I just don't want to creep out too far, because look at page 2 again, remember all the other stuff they have to do? And how are they going to do the general plan update if they're also updating their websites, and they're doing all these things over here, and then we're adding this and adding that? You know, this is, I just don't want this list to get too much longer.
Okay, well, I mean, we need to focus on a few things that are important.
Right.
Start from there, right?
Yep.
And then, you know, tackle them one at a time.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine are on here already. That already seems like a long list to me.
And, you know, and it's interesting, too, if I may. So we have recognized very much the importance of doing both commercial and residential design guidelines. So that's something that we've just decided to start working on anyhow, because I think it has a lot of bearing on cases like tonight, right?
Right.
So that's just a work effort that we're going to do, because we think that there's a lot of value in doing that. So I just want to let you know, I mean, notwithstanding what's on the list, we are embarking on a lot of things that will have, you know, tangible value.
Then that's number 10. And 10's a nice round number.
Davis?
So has revitalized the downtown still there?
Very much with revitalizing downtown on top of the list.
Oh, okay.
Well, if we get that general plan update done and we get the specific plan done, that is what's going to drive that. So those are the two keys to getting it done. Yeah, so.
You good, Mrs. Davis?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Wong?
There's a lot of projects that we don't review here in the Planning Commission, and, you know, we see a lot of the single-family residences, the private developments. But there's still a lot of commercial developments and big projects that we don't get updates on. I would recommend and request that we just have, I don't know, put it on, maybe even put it on some of these developers, just to put up signage boards for the construction sites. You know, if there's a building going up, they can put up their, you know, construction boards with the image of what the building development's going to look like in the future. A lot of people still are surprised that there's TOD projects going on when they show up at the Bard Station, and they didn't know, they didn't know there was construction starting. You know, there should be billboards all over around, and it'd be great if we had just a GIS printout of the city and just, you know, have little arrows with photos of the developments and just put it on, you know, the walls, the library if possible, or here in City Hall. We just need to make sure that people in our city aren't surprised by any developments. And, you know, we can always say, oh, didn't you see the billboard over in City Hall or on the library, just so that people are aware and that they have an opportunity. I mean, we have the general plan, we have these big projects going on, downtown specific plan. Put it on the, you know, consultants to make the poster board and just put it in the lobby so that we're keeping the public aware of the progress. And I saw in Burlingame, they have a good Burlingame website where they're listing architectural renderings of their big projects. So just put it on the consultants, just give us a page, and we'll put it on, you know, our webpage with a link to all the projects going on, and Millbrae would be good. Yeah, so there's a lot of projects that we're not even keeping track of here as the Planning Commission. So even for me, it would be helpful to just see billboards and know what's going on around the city and not be surprised by any developments going on.
Yeah, one more thing that I'd like to sort of discuss a little bit. It's on the list, but it's not really being touched on, is the transparency of all those permits that came in and the process at which, how we process these permit applications and where things are where they are, so people are not being caught surprised by how long it takes and what happened to their application. The importance of that is, you know, give people a sense of security, knowing that their permit application's being taken care of, being processed, so Millbrae doesn't get a bad reputation for taking too long to process a permit, for example, or business unfriendly, or permit unfriendly. And I understand that, you know, implementing something like this is going to take some time and costs associated with that. But I'm pretty sure whoever, you know, develops in the city or applying for permits would be happy to pay an extra fee just to make sure that, knowing that they can keep track of their status online, it'll give them a peace of mind. I mean, the permit holder will be able to pay for these, you know, technology fees going forward to implement these features. If a consultant is required to do this and implementing an online system, I'm sure these fees can be recovered through, you know, the permitting fee that is being collected.
Well, the good news is, in the fee study that we just talked about.
We incorporate that.
That's right. Here we go, incorporated, a new technology fee that helps us automate.
Yeah, and that's important, because having these things automated, we actually decrease the amount of phone calls we receive at the Planning Department. Oh, yeah, I heard a jackhammer going up, you know, is there somebody doing work without permits? You know, you reduce all these phone calls, right? So I think those are also important, and those are good things as well. You know, as far as the ADU itself is concerned, I agree that those are important things to have. But the good thing is, you know, we actually have a state ordinance that sort of governs what the ADU would be, right? So we're not entirely without any regulations whatsoever. How many ADU applications have we received so far, Sam? Do you have those statistics?
For this year?
For this year, for example, yeah.
I think at last count, when we reported before, we had like, I think around 17 or 18, but, you know, we get them, like, we're averaging like maybe two, two or three a month.
Okay, so less than two dozen, right, per year? I mean, it is important that we have some sort of regulation so that, you know, we're not entirely dependent on the state. But I think there are pressing issues that are ahead of us that are far more important, and that will really change the image of the city and actually help us going forward. So we need to be mindful about how to prioritize them going forward.
And I would add that, you know, staff has fielded questions at the counter from people interested in doing ADUs, and they're wondering whether they should wait till after January 1, when the California state law is going to effect, or whether they should submit now. And so that adds to sort of the urgency that we come up with, sort of clear plans that we can be able to answer the public when they come in, you know, as they want to know, like, how flexible are, is our ordinance going to be, you know, is it better to apply now, or will they be able to build a bigger ADU after January 1?
You always get these questions, but I think, you know, having a clear documentation as to what these regulations are, what we allow, what we don't allow, it's probably the best answers we can give to our permit applicants and serve our city. So that's what I have.
I'm good.
Seems like the work plan's good.
Very well.
I mean, we're not here to discuss everything, so, yeah.
So I will add the design guidelines on there, because I think they're extremely important, and we are working on them. So I'll go ahead and formalize this, and then we'll take the next steps, and then we start to put some timelines behind this as well, because it's always good to have a timeline to make things go.
And I actually have spoken to Mayor Holliver about the importance of the downtown revitalizations and rezoning of it. And he was actually recommending putting some sort of a subcommittee to spearhead that effort. So we can have that discussion offline, obviously, but if we were to do that, I'd be happy to contribute some time to it. That's item 8B. Staff updates, please.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So just a few items of note. So as I mentioned earlier, if you recall, we had the Moxie Hotel that came forward for a concept review. Staff has been working very diligently on the preparation of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration that will go along with that project. So we do have our admin draft informer consultant. Sam's been doing a fantastic job on that project. So we'll be reviewing that document, getting that shaped up. And then, once that's ready to be released, it will go out for public review. After the public review period closes, we will get comments and do response to comments on the environmental document. And then it's at that time when we have a final document, we bring back the actual the actual design review application formally. So then it will go through the hearing process after that. So I just want to let you know about that. As you probably heard in the news, the Gateway Project is progressing along. It's, they are still in the city's plan check review process, hoping to obtain permits here sometime in 2020. But there's been a lot of work that's been going on and reviewing all of the plans, all four buildings, all the site work, all the architecture, all the landscaping, and it's a very, very involved project. So again, great, great work on staff's part there. Mr. Mata has joined us, I mentioned that earlier. Another thing of note is that the state of California is allowing for municipalities to seek grants. It's known as the SB 2 grant, and it's for the formulation of plans and/or policies that would advance housing and try to make some things a little more streamlined. So it's $160,000 of non-competitive grant monies that are available. And so I want to make the Commission know that we have made our formal application, and we're hoping to hear back from the state. So I'll let you know as that progresses.
Good job.
Yeah, so we're really excited about that. And then, last but not least, January 14th, as we said, we'll take these fees we discussed tonight to council for the public hearing. And that's my, those are my updates for tonight.
Thank you so much, Director. Any commissioner wish to make some comments?
I hate bringing up this subject, but Taiwu, conditional use permit ended as December, is ending December, so.
So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So staff, we had prepared a letter and sent that out to Taiwu to make them aware. They're fully aware, they're making their application. In fact, I have a phone call that's in my voicemail box right now. I need to get back to them to talk about what they need to file, because they're a little bit uncertain, because the operations have not changed substantially. So that will be coming to the Commission here, probably in the very beginning part of the year, to consider a renewal of their conditional use permit.
So they're now out of, operating out of scope in terms of the conditional use permit?
So, yeah, so they, it's an expiration date, but technically, as long as they file prior to the hearing, their expiration date, which they've done in good faith, we can honor bringing forward a consideration of their extension.
So we're not at a stage of code enforcement?
No, no.
No, I don't think so.
So we know. Vice Chair?
I'm fine.
Vice Chair's fine. Ms. Davis?
I'm going to make a quick comment and thank the city and all its staff for helping with so many community events lately. Just a plot, too, that we're back to back. We had Santa pics that moved indoors because it was raining, and then the tree lighting out here. And it's nice that the city does all that work, and it's also supporting our community groups like the Millbrae Community Foundation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Wong?
It's not official news, but I've heard that the Water Department was in talks with Target to get a lease for Target over at the Orchard Supply Hardware property, but it fell through because of term agreements.
What was that?
They were trying to get Target over at the Orchard Supply.
That's what I thought I heard.
Nice. I'm sorry, if I make one more comment, I'm a little concerned that we keep not getting minutes, because I forget, and I like to not have a batch of last year's minutes to review, so.
Do I remember?
It's okay, it's just a comment.
I know Bernadette shares that same concern, and so I think yours truly needs to help her get those ready.
So who does the minutes?
Bernadette does them, and then the director reviews them. And when they don't get reviewed.
You've done them, and he has some review.
I haven't done all of them, but there are some waiting in the way.
And I know you have a lot on your plate and stuff, but it's just, when we are trying to review minutes from stuff that happened months ago, it makes it really, I mean, at some point, I just go, I guess it's okay. And I don't think, I don't feel comfortable doing that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think we talked a little bit about having a special meeting on the 21st, right? So I will not be in town. I'm attending a conference, you know, out of state. So Vice Chair Quip will have to take my spot on that day, but I do not want to delay these applications. So even though I'm not going to be here on that day, I'd like to see these things moving, progressing along.
Is that the Tuesday of the three-day weekend?
Correct, the day after Martin Luther King. Okay, so that's that. But I'd like to thank the staff for putting together the work plan. It's an impressive work. I know there's a lot to juggle, given how much work you guys are doing, how many process applications you guys have to handle, and still have to take the time to look forward to see what's important for the city. And I, you know, on behalf of the city, I'd like to appreciate your effort. Thank you very much. As well as the cost recovery, which is also important as well, because I don't want to see the city coming out of their pocket every year for a million bucks just to subsidize all these permit applications and building permits and inspections. So great work, free hand of a pass. Thank you very much.
Let's get going.
I know. So that's all my comments.
You're welcome.
Last, yeah, I was going to say, welcome to Roscoe.
Welcome, Roscoe.
Happy holidays, everybody, and see you next year, because we're not going to see each other.
When is the first meeting?
The 21st.
No.
Right, oh, no.
So the first meeting would be January 6th.
Right.
And say right now that there are not any public hearing items that are ready for that meeting.
Yet.
Yet, so we'll hold out.
I'd like to see.
We'll hold out. We do have one that is lining up, so we're hoping to find out. We do have one that is lining up, so we're hoping to find out either today or tomorrow if they've resubmitted all the requisite materials. But that said, I was kind of waiting to see how the work plan program went and if we needed to have that conversation, but it sounds like we're good, so we'll see. But I will be in touch sooner than later if we are going to have that meeting or not.
Yeah, you know, personally, I like to see these meetings filled up with applications so that we can get these things processed along. You know, I'm pretty sure we have a pretty long queue of applications that are, you know, in the queue, waiting to be processed, waiting to be heard. It would be a good idea for us to try to process these things as much as possible. Obviously, I understand some of these applications might be substandard, and they need a lot more work than anticipated. And so, but, you know, I think the general goal, I think, among the commission members is that we'd like to see some of these things being presented to the extent possible so that we can utilize the commission's time.
Well, it'll be better once Urban Republic gets moving and out of your department.
That's right.
I don't think Moosie is that far ahead, is he?
Any announcement from anybody else? Your turn.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.